Good evening. Welcome to the school.
Stacy, you're frozen.
That was a trick we were working on today.
Well, she's still frozen.
Where's Ann Louise? Maybe she can open the meeting?
Right two. There you go.
Hello, it's Ann Louise and I'm going to open the meeting at 7:04 PM. Sorry, I'm getting a Trump. Oh my God. Really sorry about that.
We need that reading of that.
Yeah, she's coming back on.
Stacey?
I lost internet connection. Okay. The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirements of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending, please state your first name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, I will do a roll call attendance. Ms. Handstead?
Present.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Present.
Mr. Morton? Ms. Shaughnessy?
Present.
Ms. Naborski?
Present.
Ms. Koshin?
Present.
Mrs. Rafi, present. At this point, I will accept a motion to approve remote participation for this evening's event.
Moved by Dawn.
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Cynthia. Mrs. Handstead, sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you and welcome. Okay. We have a full agenda this evening, so bear with us all and I appreciate your patience. Meeting minutes from May 21st, 2020, regular session. Are there any questions, comments, or changes? No? Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 21st, 2020, regular session?
Moved by. Seconded by Joan.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Joan. Roll call. Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Handstead?
Yes.
Ms. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Okay. Were people able to read and review the May 28th meeting minutes? I know they were posted earlier today. If not, we can move those on to the next. Okay, great. We will move those on to the next meeting. Thank you. Okay. School committee individual comment. Ms. Handstead, do you have any comments this evening?
Is this one you would like?
No.
Nope.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Happy last day of school, everybody. You made it! I just wanted to say happy last day of school and I'm so glad to see all of you guys. You made it one piece and happy Juneteenth tomorrow. And that's it for now.
Great. Mr. Morton?
Two things that I'm sure we may talk about again later, but I was very impressed with the efficiency of the pickup at Miller and Placentino for materials are left behind. That was an extraordinarily well-organized event. And again, today, the two parades I attended for my own children who were moving from Placentino to Miller and from Miller to Adams was, again, really a special send-off for the kids. I'm not sure if they were more excited or the teachers were. So both of those were very well-executed and it was wonderful to see so many people out there supporting the teachers and the kids. And a huge thank you for finishing up a very unusual year on a special note. Thank you. I'm off that, sorry.
No, thank you, Joan.
Two quick things. One, happy end of day. The Miller teachers' video with dancing was amazing. David Keim, you went out, man. You went far away and did your plant dance. Like, I've seen you dance, dressed as an elf. That was not giving it your all. That's all I have to say about that. It was awesome. It was awesome. Kudos for putting that together. It really exemplified the spirit of Miller School, which is a very special place. And lastly, this may very well be my last meeting serving on the school committee. And while I'm not going to go into platitudes, we have a very long meeting tonight. I just want to say, if this is indeed my last meeting, it has been my privilege and my pleasure to serve with all of you. I try to live by the Wooten rule, the Coach John Wooten, to surround yourself with smart people who argue with you. And I think I've done just that. So I thank you and it is my hope that I continue to serve. And it's up to the voters to decide. If you have not already voted, Election Day is this coming Tuesday and the polls are open for the full 13 hours, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I thank you.
Dawn?
Just to get on and also say thank you very much to all of our educators, to our teachers, administrators, paras, for getting us through a difficult year. And a shout-out again to Miller for a phenomenal Moving Up ceremony and also the variety show. We're all in this together. It was organized by the well-loved fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Peters, and she just did a fantastic job. It was great to see so many happy faces today at the fifth-grade parade. This was my first year where I got to see the Holliston High School Senior Award Ceremony and the undergraduate award ceremony. And I really enjoyed that. So thank you very much to the high school administrators for putting that on.
Lisa?
Yes, also thank you to all of our educators, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, everyone who works normally in the schools for their hard work in what has become, what has been a very trying time. I have a couple of quick announcements for CPAC. They are, the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, had new leadership this year and they're changing things up a little bit. So they just got on Instagram and Twitter. They're trying to expand their social media presence. So you can just Google them and find them on, or search for them on Instagram or Twitter if you want to follow them. And they've also, they're also working on a new website. So they have a lot going on and they've been a great group to work with. I want to thank all the parents that I've worked with on CPAC this school year and I look forward to continuing. And then very briefly, I know we're going to talk about this later, probably under another agenda item, but I just wanted to say thank you so much to the administration. I was so impressed with the response, the quick and very proactive response that was given to the parents who offered some constructive criticism on our summer reading lists. I was really happy to see such a flexible response and so much hard work go into updating our summer reading list to reflect more diversity. So thank you and that's it for me.
Great. I also echo all of your sentiments about the parades and congratulations to the students for surviving another year. Extra kudos and congratulations to all the teachers for really handling something extraordinary. And thank you to the administrators for their leadership. I too, this could be my last meeting as well. And as I shared with you via email, it has been my privilege and my honor to sit with you on this table, at this table. And so thank you very much for that. Congratulations to the Fred Miller School on the Safe Roots to School Honorable Mention Award that they received this week. Special thanks to Select Woman Tina Heine, Chief Stone, Officer Woods, and Officer Giorgio, the school resource officers who worked with the PTO to train the parents who did the walking school bus. And Mr. Keim, without your support, we would not have been able to do that at all. So congratulations. I'm sorry I missed the award ceremony, but that was awesome. This evening, where it is officially the last day of school, I would like to take a moment to congratulate some special people in our HPS family who are now ready for a different chapter in their lives. Congratulations to the following retirees. Mrs. Carleen McGordy, Placentino preschool teacher. Mrs. Cindy Spino, fourth-grade Miller School teacher. Mrs. Eileen Harvey, the Miller School Student Services Administrator. Mrs. Lori O'Rourke, Rams sixth-grade English teacher. And Mrs. Karen Blackney, High School Math Department. We wish you the best. I know it's COVID, but I hope you have a most amazing retirement. Enjoy it. Take that time to recharge and enjoy your families. And with that, I will move this over to the administration. Brad?
I just wanted to make one brief comment tonight and thank the community and especially the employees of the Holliston Public Schools. 2020 is a year that no one will likely forget. It is hard to believe sometimes that we actually have had two public health crises that we've had to deal with this year. We started the year with triple E and had to readjust a lot of our academic schedules and our extracurricular schedules accordingly. And then, of course, ended the year with the coronavirus. And I would argue that there is no more flexible and professional staff than the teachers, the administrators, the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, the bus drivers, the coaches, and everyone who was associated with the Holliston Public Schools. We are deeply indebted for your flexibility this year. Thank you so much for all your incredible hard work. This is a year that we will not soon forget and hope we will never have to repeat again. But it is nice to know, in the end, that we can do it. So thank you to the staff and of the Holliston Public Schools. You are an amazing group of educators and I'm proud to be your colleague.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm going to be redundant in this case. I think it's just such a unique time that I just need to recognize and thank the staff, administrators, parents, and students for the extraordinary efforts and partnership that was put forth this spring. The way that people worked together and did their very best to serve kids in this unique time, along with community partners from throughout Holliston. So I wanted to recognize and thank everyone. It's been an extraordinary time and I'm proud of all the work that's been done and I'm proud of the students who stuck in there and the parents who we know had to do things that they were not paid to do in this time. And I know that from experience in my household. I also wanted to say, in case people haven't seen it yet, there was a district survey that was sent out today. Within an hour and a half, we had 200 responses. And we encourage everyone to respond to that survey. We're asking that you respond multiple times if you have multiple students because I know from my household, each kid has a different, unique experience. Regardless of whether in the same school or even in the same grade. So we ask you to do that. So this is an initial survey that's really helping us to reflect upon the remote learning experience for kids and learn from it so that we can continue to use that to inform our instruction when we go back in the fall regardless of what the scenario is. We all hope for face-to-face as soon as possible. That's our prayer as administrators and teachers and everyone. And we will be prepared for everything and anything. So please fill out that survey so that we can get your input. And it also does, at the end, I asked you some question or two about your concerns and considerations regarding reopening. We'll be doing more feedback and surveys around those issues as we get more guidance from the state and develop our plans more fully or more, you know, flesh those plans out in beginning form. But thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Peter. Keith?
Just one other quick note. Our fantastic lunch program is actually going to be continuing through the end of June, through June 30th. We're going to reevaluate it at that point to see whether or not the need is still there. We've been serving over 100 meals for each day, both breakfast and lunch as a combined meal. It's going to continue on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday through the 30th and we'll be doing an evaluation whether we go forward with that from there. So that's it.
Thank you. Ann Louise is, she's not on my screen. Ann Louise?
I'm here. I'm here. I'm sorry, everybody. I was so flummoxed when Stacy called me out first and like, wait a minute, I had something else on my brain and I just wasn't prepared. But I did want to just say a few quick words. This year is a pretty meaningful year for me because my last child is graduating. And I can't even talk through that. It's been such an amazing journey and I owe such gratitude. Our family does, our students do, to all of the teachers, the administration, the coaches, guidance, everybody involved in their education. Several years ago, I spoke to the HFT at the beginning of the school year and I asked the teachers to stand up if they had ever encountered in their classes or experiences one of my daughters. I have three, not 10. And I myself was surprised when probably half the room stood up. It took that many educators to get my children to where they are and they are in amazing places. And that matters so much. And it mattered especially this year, watching the difficulty that the students were encountering and the teachers and the educators and this administration in trying to marshal our children through the most difficult educational experience probably in our country's history. And I am impressed. Holliston went above and beyond. It wasn't perfect, but we turned on a dime from a regular educational scenario and our teachers stepped up and did an amazing job when you consider everything that happened. And our administrators were there guiding them and supporting them. The counselors were working overtime, making sure every child was safe, even if they couldn't engage in daily learning. Coaches were still trying to connect with their students, amazingly enough. I mean, it was just really pretty amazing. And when I think about Mary finishing up her experience here, I'm saddened not just because, of course, my children are moving on and what the heck am I going to do now? But participating in that through school committee and getting to know all of you at a pretty intimate level has been amazing. So to the roughly 100 staff members who educated my children, thank you. To all the others, I wish we had encountered you along the way as well. Thank you for everything, really. It's been amazing and I'm here for another year. But I do want you to know how deeply I appreciate it every single day. It meant a lot. Sorry, that wasn't supposed to happen.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to open public comments. We have four registered speakers. So I keep, I'm going to let Keith sort of host this part of the meeting. And I just want to remind people that this is a section for public comment, not conversation with the school committee. So I just want to make sure it's not awkward for anyone again. So Keith, with that, you can handle public comment. Thank you.
Okay, the first person is phone number 202-280-9879. Please identify yourself and your address. Please identify yourself and your address.
Can you hear me? My name is Frank Sobchek and I live at 815 Highland Street.
Go ahead, Frank.
All right, I have two children in the Holliston Schools. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. And thank you to all the teachers, administrators, and leaders for getting us through this difficult year. I wanted to offer an explanation of why our parent group, Bring Kids Back MA, is concerned about the current planning process for the fall and use it as a vehicle for discussion about some of the comments from the last school committee meeting. For civil society to function properly, something that I learned in civics, three things should generally happen. First, governments at all levels should actively communicate in a clear and timely manner and provide transparency into their planning and decision-making. Members of this committee have noted that there has been a communications breakdown and that we all can do better at this task. I would posit that in times of crisis, relying on passive models of communication that have worked in the past is not optimal. Second, governments should listen to their constituents, the voters, and incorporate that feedback into their decision-making. Some districts such as Chickapee and Plymouth have already sent out surveys to ask parents whether they would prefer in-person, remote, or hybrid options for the fall. Finally, governments at all levels should take that feedback from their constituents and communicate it to the next higher level, local to state, state to federal. Without that feedback, none of the levels of government can function effectively. And if feedback is ignored, it creates a caustic environment for civil society. In this case, as was noted by some of the members of the school committee during the 4-June meeting, we as a community should be very concerned that state aims to implement a one-size-fits-all solution. Our district is very different from Bridgewater and they in turn are very different from North Adams. That is why we ask the school committee to please push back against the state one-size-fits-all approach. Tell them the message that your constituents are telling you. You're not alone in this. There are many other towns who are also pushing back against the overly prescriptive approach. Our parents group, BringKidsBackMA.org, will communicate our concerns and requests with the state directly through our connections, as we did when Governor Baker received and read our letter on 15 June. We will continue to advocate for students to return to the classroom full-time in the fall as well as an equal and mirrored remote program for those who do not want to return. At the same time, the Holliston School Committee has formal and official connections for advocacy that we simply do not have. The last point on the importance of the local autonomy is something that our nation's highest experts have addressed. And I would note the comments of Dr. Anthony Fauci, Director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, who stated on June 5th that, quote, "To make the extrapolation that you shouldn't open schools, I think that's a bit of a reach," end quote. He also noted that the decision on how to reopen schools should be made at the individual community level based on track infection rates of the virus. Our nation's highest expert on communicable diseases disagrees with the state-level prescriptive model for schools. I would like to close with a comment, and I know we all care about the same thing, our children and their education and well-being. Let's all work together towards that end. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Next up is 774-233-1193. Please identify yourself and your address.
Hi, my name is Kristin Stetzel. I'm a Holliston resident. I am the parent of an incoming ninth grader and an incoming sixth grader. And we'd just like to thank, or wholeheartedly thank, the administration for their prompt response to a request for an updated summer reading list for Miller and Placentino. We really appreciate Jamie Sleney's quick response and email and Linda Canal's work creating an updated list that I know will be released soon. And we also just want to recognize the Adams list went out this week and that is also very current and diverse and I believe reflects the community's values. Finally, we'd like to respectfully request, we stated this in a letter, but formally and publicly, we'd like to request an increased budget for the purchase of diverse books for the Holliston Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have 508-654-2001. Please identify yourself and your address.
Okay, it's Anne Marie Dorning and 9 Timberledge Drive.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Hey, so thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here tonight to, I guess, just ask the administration and through the school committee to reconsider a policy. Back in March, like many school districts, Holliston decided to go to a pass/fail grading system where students would not have any of the course grades they took during this time calculated into their GPAs. And the switch to online learning is something none of us could have predicted and was accomplished, and I think accomplished really well with a lot of hard work on the part of many people, educators, administrators, and of course, our students. And given the circumstances back in March, a quick decision on pass/fail was also understandable. But I would say that it was a decision that affected all years of the high school but put an unfair burden on one group, juniors. These are students who are just about to apply for college and who had only a few months left of junior year to be able to bump up their GPAs. A GPA that I would add would be more, not less important to students applying to college during COVID because of the decision by many colleges to go test optional. And I think because of this reason, many districts in Massachusetts have revised this initial policy because they recognize that it burdens all students, but one group in particular. I did a little bit of a search and I understand that in many cases, it's apples to oranges. But a quick overview shows that Lexington is giving grade bumps to all students who pass all four quarters and will calculate that into a GPA. Weston is allowing students who pass their online learning courses to drop the lowest grade from the first three quarters of this year. And Wayland just changed from their pass/fail to a different system where they will calculate the GPA two different ways and offer students whichever one is higher. So these are just a small sample of the changes other districts have made. And I just refuse to believe that those school systems are any better or that their towns care any more about their students than we do. I just believe that upon reflection, people understood that it's the right thing to do, that sticking with a pass/fail with no adjustment is fundamentally inequitable because juniors are shouldering the burden of that decision. And just finally, I would just say that the students have worked hard all year. They've lost so much and they've had their move-up day taken away. They don't know if and when they'll be able to take their SATs. They can't tour a college. And they're looking at a very uncertain fall. And there are many students in this group for whom a small adjustment in a grade-point average can make all the difference in the world. And I just want to end by saying, this isn't a gift. Our students have worked really hard. Adjusting the grading system, as many other districts have done, would simply reflect that hard work. And so I just hope that if there's any way to adjust this policy that the administration, the school committee, and the high school administration might see their way to do so and give our students this one small win. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last registered user I see came on. And where'd she go? There she is. 508-429-1168. Please identify yourself and your address.
Hi, I'm Alicia Thomas, 468 Central Street. Good evening. I'm really happy to be here. Good evening, I'm really happy to be here. I'm gonna read a slightly abridged, to fit within the three minutes version, of a statement that I wrote, which has been co-signed by 103 other Holliston residents and HHS alumni. I've emailed the full text with all the names to Dr. Jackson and Dr. Patello. So here it goes. "We can do better. We must do better." These words are echoing across our nation and in our town. On June 4th, HHS senior Gemma Sampas spoke to the school committee about the lack of multicultural education in the Holliston public schools. Gemma's powerful anecdotes are evidence of a truth that we must face. Multicultural education that examines systemic inequity is not part of the core curriculum in our schools. Multicultural, actively inclusive education is an essential cornerstone of an effective curriculum as put forth in the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks. A 2018 revision of the History and Social Science Framework calls for, quote, "Inclusion of standards that reflect the diversity of the United States and world cultures." The frameworks also call for all mass students to be, quote, "prepared to make informed civic choices" and assume their responsibility for strengthening equality, justice, and liberty in and beyond the United States. We must answer this call to prepare our study, our students, not only for college jobs and life in a diverse society, but also to prepare them to think critically about the deep divisions we see so starkly playing themselves out today. We do not face this challenge alone. Vast multicultural education resources already exist at both the national and local level. With these resources and organizations at our disposal, we can prepare our students to bridge the painful divide in our country and to work to dismantle systemic inequality. At the last school committee meeting, diverse Holliston member Barbara Fitzwarby spoke unequivocally about the need for immediate action on this issue. The undersigned Holliston residents would like to propose the formation of a multicultural education task force that will work toward changes to the current HPS curriculum through a lens of diversity and inclusion. The mission of this task force is to embed inclusive multicultural education along with critical examination of systemic inequity into every layer of HPS curriculum. This volunteer group could include but not be limited to diversity and inclusion professionals, parents, teachers, town officials, and students. While the creation of this task force is an immediate step we can take to begin the process of change, it is also important to note that the work does not begin and end with this task force. HPS face a myriad of challenges related to diversity that need to be addressed in conjunction with curriculum reform. The creation of this task force is a step in the process of creating a more equitable learning environment, and current events tell us that direct action is needed now. By creating a space to examine these specific issues in our curriculum, we can do better. We must do better. We look forward to working together to create the change we need for our children and for the entire Holliston community. Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you to our speakers. Public comment is now closed. One of the special things as a chair is you get to manage the agenda. And so this evening, I am changing the agenda around. And so, Meg, great, you're on my screen. We are going to move up personnel for the agenda item of final meeting with Ms. Cameri, our Director of Student Services. And Meg, I have invited some special guests to share some parting wisdom or thank you to you, and I will call on them in a moment. I just want to share with the committee that yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend a session with all of our paraprofessionals. And Meg ran this, this group, and it was all of the training and professional development for the pairs. And I am gonna try and pull it up on my screen. There was a word bubble of all of the names of all of the participants. And I think it's really important, and this is based on Meg's leadership, that we need to really recognize and appreciate those wonderful men and women who are part of our classroom families. So give me one moment to share with you the word bubble. And let's see. And if I can't have it, I will make, if I can't get it up there, I will certainly make sure that we get it on our website because it was, it's just important to recognize all those wonderful people. And it is also important that you see, I want the school committee to see, the list of training. It was impressive. Let's see. That's a movie. So Meg, while I'm trying to futz around with this, would you please just share with the committee some of the titles of the training that you held during this?
Absolutely, I would love to. So as the group knows, we early on wanted to make sure that our paraprofessionals felt connected and valued and that we continued to work with them, especially in the absence of their ability to work with students right away. So we had a wide range of professional development offerings that included sort of self-studies, article reads, book reads, video clips. We had a whole range, and each week they got a weekly schedule. So some of the titles were social thinking, augmentative and alternative communication, hearing impairments and audiology, life-threatening allergies, seizure training, let's dip our toes into cultural proficiency, confidentiality, personal and protective equipment, school refusal. We did Google work, so we did Google Calendar, Google Drive, gender identity, growth mindset, mindfulness, how to collect data, safe and supportive schools, what's an FBA, nursing, how to do playground triage, the SAP process at our elementary level, trauma-sensitive strategies, understanding challenging behavior, coping strategies, understanding psychological testing, executive functioning, vaping 101, occupational therapy strategies, understanding different types of mental health diagnosis, supporting students with reading and math disabilities, acceptance and commitment therapy, Eastbed, diabetes. I know we did some regarding students with visual impairments. So I think I covered most of them. Stacy, I was trying to look at my slides while we were going over.
Okay, can you see my screen? Keith?
No. We did, we did before, you, you went, you went back into Zoom or something. So click, click to the side. Try again.
Click to my side, okay. Now can you see it?
I can see you.
No.
Okay, well, I'm an idiot, so we're gonna have to put it up on, on the website because I can't figure this out. But I just wanna say thank you to...
David Kime found it.
Thank you, Mr. Kime.
Oh, I love it.
So those are all of our awesome paraprofessionals. And I believe that our psychologists and our nurses and BCBA's, and I please, I hope I'm not missing anybody, are all, school psychologists are all on that page. So thank you to all of you. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. Kime. Can you uncheck? Perfect, thank you. So I'm gonna offer to my school committee first, if you would like to share some words with Meg. She knows how I feel about her, and I don't think I can actually make it through this evening. So Meg, I hope you know my words from yesterday remain the same, and I wish you all the best. So school committee members, just raise your hand, and I will...
I don't know if I can look at Meg, so I'm just gonna look at you, Stacy, while I say that. So, um, so Meg, I just want, I wish you so much, like, I, I'm so thankful for all of your collaboration and help over the last many years, especially with things with policy. You've been so incredibly helpful and supportive. And I wish you so much joy and happiness and challenge in your next post, wherever, wherever you go, whatever you do. I wish you so much the best, and I will miss you very much. So thank you.
Joan?
I suppose I'll go before Ann-Louise so I can start crying and she can just pick up where I, where I drop off. I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna try not to cry. Meg, you're a consummate professional. This is a big loss to the district, and I, I wish you Godspeed. And on a personal level, I have to say, I wouldn't have wanted anyone else in charge of student services when my family went through what we went through. And I, I can't talk anymore. Ann-Louise, you cry now.
God, Joan, you just like undid the water well again. Meg, I, I have to tell you, there was so much I truly didn't know and probably still don't know about all that you do. You are one of the, you have one of the hardest jobs in the district because by definition, everyone needs so much. And I think Joan said it right, you are a consummate professional. And the evidence of that is your willingness to listen. Several years ago, when I was chair and I knew a number of the parents were struggling with certain issues, you know, we sat down with them to try to listen to them. We took notes, and we brought it back, and you absorbed it all, and you thanked us. And you could have said a lot of other things, but you didn't. You said, "Thank you," and you said, "I'm gonna take this into consideration and hear it," and that meant so much. And like Joan, at a personal level, when I never envisioned that I would need to tap into some of the services that you provide, and I just sort of ambled into your office and I said I need some advice, you were there for us, and it made a big difference. It made a big difference. My child made her way through, and I'm not sure I would have known in what direction to head without your advice. So I want to thank you for that. And like everybody else, I just wish you so much happiness in your home district. I think it's gonna be an amazing experience for you. It totally stinks that we're losing you, but if we have to, then we should lose you to your home district. So thank you so much for all that you've given, and wish you so much in the future.
Trish Clark?
I'm jumping in, Meg. It's me again. Okay, I have to do it because I had to write it all down. Yesterday, I did it off the top. Today, I had to write it all down, Meg. So, good evening, my name is Trisha Clark, and I'm a paraprofessional at Placentino, and I'm also the HFT Paraprofessional Chair. Tonight, I would like to take this opportunity to express my thanks and gratitude to Meg Cameri for all the support she has given to the students and staff at Holliston Public Schools. On Wednesday, Meg put together a slideshow thanking the paraprofessional staff for their hard work and dedication during remote learning. It is I, Meg, who needs to thank you on behalf of the pairs. Right from the beginning of our PD training, you stressed with all of us to take care of ourselves, our families, and to do the best we can with our work schedules. You supported us, Meg. You piloted a program to educate the pairs, and for 12-plus weeks, we learned through Zooms, self-guided programs, and from experts across the field who shared with us much-needed training. You were the driving force behind a great team of staff members who showed us we matter. We are forever grateful to you, Meg, for your confidence in us, for keeping our morale lifted, for caring and listening to us when we needed to be heard. You kept us connected to the pulse of the Holliston schools and to the students we work with. Please know, Meg, you've made a difference in all of our lives. We wish you the best, and we're gonna miss you. And as Joan said, Godspeed. And please stay in touch because we really are gonna miss you. And thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything. You've taught us so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. If anyone else, oh, Andy, and if anyone else wanted to speak to Meg, would you just send me a chat? Andy, go ahead.
I think Lisa's hand was also about the same time as mine. Meg, thank you so much. The last few months have been challenging, and certainly your job here didn't end when you accepted that wonderful new position that you're going off to. So we know that you often see families when they're having significant challenges, and that certainly hasn't changed over the past few months. So I appreciate everything you do, and certainly right up to the end, you were really working to support our families and our children. So a great loss for us, a great gain for, for your new, for your new job and new district and those families, and wish you very well. Thank you very much.
Lisa, I'm sorry, I had only the pretty bunch of you, so my apologies.
That's okay. Yeah, I just tried to send a chat to you. I can only send to Keith, so I don't know what's up with that. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I don't think I've ever met anyone harder-working, more dedicated, or smarter than you, Meg. And it's been a pleasure to work with you. I'm so sorry we're losing you, as everyone else has said, and I'll just echo that, you know, I, I know our loss is their gain, and they are very lucky to have you. I've personally benefited from your knowledge and experience, even if I didn't always know it in the moment, and if I didn't always agree in the moment. I, I've really appreciated and admired the wisdom that you bring to the role. And I feel like we, you have such big shoes to fill, and we were so lucky to have benefited from so many years of your expertise. I feel like that you have left us, left us in such good shape. I feel like so many of the smart changes you made are gonna help us through the next few years, and I'm so grateful for that. So all the best to you, and thank you.
Jamie Sleeney?
So Meg, I speak on behalf of the principals. As a building leader, it's not always the case that we have a partnership in a student service director. Don't cry, Meg, because then I cry, then we will cry. And we've had that partnership. You are in our buildings, you know our kids, you know our staff. You come to us, you partner with us, you push back, which we like, right? We've had some really great conversations. And in the end, I feel like we've all grown from just knowing you and having you as part of our lives. And while we say goodbye as a colleague, we certainly don't say goodbye as a friend.
Mrs. Bowler?
Meg, I speak for all the school nurses. As we say, we are so sad to see you go, but at the same time, so happy for you going to North Attleboro. Those nurses don't realize how lucky they are. You have been a true, true advocate for all of us nurses for health in every sense of the word, truly. You brought us to meetings and made sure we always had a voice across the district. I've had the opportunity to work with you very closely over the last seven years, and you're simply amazing, so professional. Your energy, your passion for everything that you do. It's been wonderful working with you. We're gonna miss you, but I know it's not the end, and you're just a text away. Miss you.
Dan?
Yes, Meg, it wouldn't be a school committee meeting if I wasn't here with you, so couldn't let that go. Meg, I consider you actually my first Massachusetts friend because three years ago, I came up here and was living in Franklin. You were living in Franklin. I knew nobody, and you helped me navigate Franklin and also the, the central office, which is sometimes not easy, not, not easy to do. So really appreciate all that. I do consider you a friend. And I'm still amazed by the work you do. When I want to complain about the number of devices I manage, I look at the number of people that you're responsible for, and I say, "Be quiet," you know? I'm doing computers, you're managing people. So I really appreciate that. But I, I do remember one thing in particular that I, I never looked forward to meetings, really, but I gotta be honest, meetings in Meg's office at that little round table, they were the most efficient meetings I've ever been to. It was like five minutes, she was decisive, I was out of there, onto my work. So I really appreciate that. So I really appreciate that, Meg, and please stay in touch. All the best.
Brad?
Well, I guess it's nice to know that I'm not the only one that you've thrown out of your office when you've made a decision and it's time to move on, Meg. Meg, what you do is dealing with families at their most vulnerable at the time when they are highly energized, highly emotional, terrified, and feeling and lacking a little bit of trust sometimes. And the word that comes to mind when I think of you is courage. And that is because you have the strength of your convictions to see the long picture, to see the long haul. And I have had more parents, some of whom I see on this Brady Bunch screen tonight, who have come to me and said, at the moment she told me what she told me, I wasn't ready to hear it. But as I think about it and as I've processed it and as I've grown and as I've watched and as I've learned, I've learned that her advice and her counsel was sound and for the best interest of my child. And Meg, that takes an incredible amount of courage to sit in front of a parent and tell them something that at that moment, they do not want to hear, but that you know they have to hear it and it is that you love their child as much as they do and that you want their child to be successful. And I admire that beyond anything. So I want to thank you for helping me show courage when I've been weak and helping me to see some of my weaknesses through a very unforgiving lens of Meg Kamieri at that round table. So, because you've told me some things that I didn't want to hear at the time either, Meg. And you, so you've given me what you give everybody and that is your wise counsel and your brilliant thinking. And I am forever grateful. And so whatever happens for the rest of tonight and the conversations that happen, I assure you that there is no doubt that the bigger loss to Holliston that is happening on June 30th is you. And Holliston is forever improved because of your work. And each and every member of the administrative team is better at what they do because you've been their colleague and I am too. Good luck, Meg.
Meg, don't feel pressured. If you don't want to say anything, feel free to turn off your screen, but you can't leave because we need you for policy in a couple of minutes. But please feel free to say something if you'd like, but if not. Oh, gosh, Peter, sorry, Peter.
Keith has a question.
I didn't hear, but I listened. Yeah, I agree with the person who said that, Meg, your role is the most complex and difficult one in the district. And I've been amazed from the time I was a principal into my role now, how you approached that role with such skill and such a level of wisdom and detail. And building upon what Brad would say, that you did it with this steel compass of caring about kids and doing everything in your power to do the best by kids and their families. You know, you are a gifted, skilled, and compassionate person who's led this district incredibly well. And I thank you for everything that you've done.
Go ahead, Keith, sorry.
First, let me, I need to correct something. Slaney, you like it when she pushes back? Come on, geez, nobody believes that, nobody. Meg, you know, we're partners. We speak the fastest, we can talk, we can process it that way. There's no question about it that you and I are both on 78 permanently, for those old enough to remember what records are. Meg, I can't say how much I've enjoyed working with you. Between the fact that, you know, I chaired your search committee, you know, we worked together in the beginning to help you along with the things that I knew about special ed, which was administrative, not any of the stuff that you kept pushing me back. That was the two hands to my chest stuff. But, you know, it's, you soak things up like a sponge and then you gave me the two hands to the chest. But you were always respectful and, and, you know, you appreciated the fact that my history here is long, like real long at times, and getting longer. But the challenge, I think, that, you know, you and I always had was that we both wanted to do what was in the best interest of children at all times. And, you know, it made it easy for us to ground ourselves. And even when we disagreed about things or disagreed on, you know, how to go through something, it was always about the kids with us and that made it easy so we could have good, honest discourse and move forward from it. I'm going to miss your kids. There's no question about it, you know. I feel lucky that you let them come and, you know, be part of my life for a short amount of time. And, you know, I mean, you know that you and I will be in touch, even though we both know that I don't do that very well. So, but I will say this, that, you know, I've worked with four sped directors here and you are by far the best and it's no question. Thank you.
Did I miss any other hands? Because I can only see 12 of you. Am I good? Okay. Meg?
Am I okay to comment? Is that okay? Yeah, I just want to say, without falling completely apart, that I am, I will be forever grateful to this school committee. It's been pretty consistent during my time in the district role. And I really value the role as a student services director, so beyond special education and a proactive manner. And I feel like that was really well calibrated with the school committee, that you two view it as a way in which we need to think proactively for our children and increase services and really adjust to what we see changing for our children and their profile, you know, across the nation and in Holliston. And so just a very generous, welcoming, I think, very well thoughtful and smart and meaningful committee. And that doesn't happen very often where a student services director feels so supported by their committee. And I hope that, I mean, I don't know if this is just a lucky freak of nature that I've had that experience and that you guys have always asked thoughtful questions and really engaged with me. But I will be so, I mean, I'm just so grateful for that and appreciative for that continued sort of collaboration and professional relationships that we had. And I can't even speak to the principals or Brad or Keith because I'm going to lose it and that doesn't ever look attractive on Zoom for people. Just thank you so much. You guys mean the world to me. So, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Meg. We love you. So why don't you go take a little break there and we'll call you back in a couple of minutes for policy. So I, as some of you will notice, there's three pages of faces tonight. And that's because I invited some other special guests to celebrate Brad's 16 years with us. Technically, tonight was supposed to be the last scheduled school committee meeting with him and us. But COVID is crazy and so we might actually have another meeting next week or the week after. But nonetheless, we need to take a couple of minutes to celebrate Dr. Jackson. And the school committee reached out and had some magic happen. So Brad, would you please take that package that was delivered at your doorstep and bring it over to you? And while you do that, ask Chief Cassidy if he wanted to say a few words to join us.
Thank you, Stacy. Brad, years ago, once your hiring had been announced, even before you officially started in Holliston, we got together. We talked about the community partnership model, which had been built up over the years with police, fire, schools, and youth and family services, using a wraparound model to address the needs of our students and their families. You shared this vision and committed to building on that foundation. As you now prepare to leave Holliston, you leave behind an enduring legacy of collaboration, which is unequaled in other districts. We have partnered on grant applications. We've stood together on the sidelines of Gillette. We've shared information and we have relentlessly advocated for those entrusted to our care. We have laughed and mourned together. We have developed and implemented school safety policies and procedures and have trained together so that when an incident happened, we shared a common language and response framework. I've already shared this sentiment with you privately, but my hope is that as you transition to your new role at Shawshin, that you continue to model that ensuring the physical, social, and emotional well-being of students does not have to be done in silos. Collaboration between police, fire, schools, and local human service agencies is not just theoretical. It truly works in practice at the local level. Stay safe and I wish you the best of luck, my friend.
Mrs. Hein?
Hi, Dr. Jackson. I've only had the pleasure of working with you for just over a year. So I'm going to share my own personal comments, but also the comments of the other board members that I serve with. You are described by members of my board as admirable in your long-term service to the town, fair, intelligent, dedicated, kind, professional. And I will add that you have been nothing but supportive of me as a brand-new face in town government and a brand-new face to the school committee and the schools themselves. You've supported me in the Safe Foods to School endeavors. I owe you many thanks for that. On behalf of my entire board, John Cronin, Mark Aronian, and myself, we wish you the very best of luck at Shawshin and we thank you for your incredible dedication to the public schools in Holliston. Best of luck.
Mrs. Ryan?
Hi, on behalf of HPS MindShare, I just wanted to really thank Dr. J. When we moved here last summer, I'm a product of public education and now my children will be. I'm very happy about that. I jumped right in and I want to thank Stacy and Sarah for their support in taking on this role. And quickly just thank the leadership from the superintendent's office, all the way down to staff and teachers for making education accessible and meaningful over these last 14 weeks. And part of that and what HPS MindShare does is education of parents. And Meg reached out and my co-partner, Jen Prince, we jumped in and there was a three-part series over Zoom, which we believe served a need of the community related to everything from grief and self-care to motivation to what's next. So we want to deeply thank you for allowing us to be in these roles, for having us jump in and collaborate with you. And again, it means a lot to be a part of a community that cares so much and embraces new, old, been here for 40 years, been here for six months, whatever. And both of you, and particularly Dr. Jackson, took the time to make sure that parents were also thought of during this time and we were just the conduit to help with that. So wishing you both success, happiness, great health, and your new endeavors in all ways. So thank you for this opportunity, Stacy, and really appreciate both you, Dr. Jackson and Meg. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
I'm not sure if I know how to make my video show, but anyway, you can hear me. On behalf of the Holliston PTO, I just wanted to extend my gratitude and thanks. We've had such a wonderful go of it here at Holliston Public Schools. We've been really so amazingly thankful to have all of the different, you know, traditional Montessori, French programs. It's been a great environment for our family and I'm happy to be a part of it. We've got such a caring, welcoming, supportive staff. And I think that all just is a reflection on how much you give to our community. And I'm just so thankful and grateful. So best of luck. We will miss you and we just move forward. So thank you.
Mrs. Ponket?
Hi, I just want to say that I've probably known Brad the longest with Keith, having been on his, on the superintendent's search committee, on the strategic planning committee. And I don't have any prepared remarks. I just really wanted to say thank you because for a decade, it was just awesome working on the team and it was sort of the seminal experience of my life, personal and professional, to be part of a team. I think sometimes people get caught up in the minutiae of having a student in a public school system, in any school system, but they don't, it's not really until your kid graduates and you're out and about that you sort of get a broader view. And certainly Holliston is one of the premier districts in Massachusetts. And I'm just very happy to have been a part of that and I've learned so much from you, Brad. And it was wonderful working with you for a decade. We laughed, we cried, we yelled. It was, it was everything. It was all the emotions. And I know I speak for my longtime colleagues, many of us who are with you from the beginning. And we just appreciate everything you've done and we wish you all the best. And thank you. It's been great.
Sadi? And please, if I have said, mispronounced your name, please, please correct me.
Sadi from diverse Holliston? Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, Dr. Jackson. I'm Sadi Sadi here on behalf of the diverse Holliston, wishing you success on your next journey. We enjoyed having you in some of our events, sharing your enthusiasm for change. We know change is not easy and it takes time. As our community become ever more diverse, the world of our children become ever more interconnected, educators have a significant role in helping every child, regardless of gender, race, religion, and ethnicity thrive, and equally experience a fulfilled, prosperous, and healthy life. I hope that wherever you are, you help build a diverse and inclusive community with your dedication and perseverance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kachone?
Hi, Brad. All right, so I'm pleased to be able to say a few things here tonight, but I did prepare some remarks. So let me read from those, if you may. For the past several years, we've worked closely together as a union president and a superintendent, naturally would. I've learned so many things that I cannot possibly recount them all at this time. But one thing sticks out to me, and that is your ability to paint a picture through your remarkable gift of storytelling. As an eloquent speaker, your audience becomes captivated by your words so much that they can feel as they are part of your story. Your articulate storytelling has served you well. I've had the chance to see you wear your heart on your sleeve. When you describe- when you describe your uncompromising passion for education, particularly when discussing the essential need to provide an equal access to education for all students. Or even when I see the twinkle in your eye appear when little kids pop into a Zoom meeting, or sometimes that twinkle when my two little ones make a surprise visit to central office. I'd like to close by reading a short letter that my kindergartner wrote about a month ago when he first heard you were leaving while watching a school committee meeting. You never know who's out there watching school committee meetings. Congratulations, Brad. You're going to a new job. I know everyone else will be sad you're leaving. So we decided we should make cards for you. I hope you have fun and you can be late sometimes because it's closer to your house. All people you know are going to miss you from the Cottones. So he has it here and he's been wanting to mail it to you for about a month now. So Brad, thank you so much for your 16 years of service, dedication, commitment to the Holliston Public Schools. I truly wish you much health and much happiness.
Mrs. Fuller?
Lynn, you're muted.
At least I got the video up there, right? Hi, Brad. I just wanted to say a few words. It's been a privilege working with you during your entire 17-year tenure. I started off as a school nurse, but most of the time as a nurse leader. So we've worked on many, many health-related issues over the years, a multitude of issues, whether it was some policy development, protocols, but this year alone has kind of put us over the edge a little bit. I'm still here, though. I'm still here, between the triple E and now the coronavirus. But you have been a major support to us all. What I have found invaluable over the years is your unwavering devotion to health and wellness and all the students. You have had a confidence in me, which I appreciate, and very supportive to me and all the nurses. And for that, we thank you. So I wish you the best as you begin your next chapter. I hope you have some wonderful travel experiences and the best to you and your family.
Mr. Keim?
We have a very long agenda ahead of us here, folks.
So Brad, I'm speaking for the principals this evening and, you know, I was asking the question during our admin meeting today because I wanted to get the year right, 2004. You guys all thought I was going to quiz them the whole time. No, I was just getting the initial year. Keith, I think I've got Keith beat. I've got, I'm the longest-standing admin here in the district, finishing up 21 years. And it has been a great pleasure to work with Brad over the last 16 years. He has helped each one of us as administrators grow into the leaders that we are. We all came into our leadership roles and we were in the shadow of somebody before us who, you know, the buildings really respected. I was following Tim Cornley. Jamie was following Linda Ween, actually really me, but no, it was Linda Ween. David Jordan was following Peter and Nicole was following Mike Canoyer. And each one of those leaders took the buildings, you know, to great places. And so, you know, you let us grow as leaders. And one of the thing that Brad does is you go into Brad with a question and he asks you a question back. And he wants you to come to a solution. And so he really makes you think about how you're going to come up with that solution. And he will help you in your thought process, but he, he will, he will push you. But the one thing that, that I believe we will all say is, once we've come up with a solution, he supports us 100%. And so, you know, it is, it has been always a pleasure to know that you have our back when we do that. You have supported your administrators in, you know, getting their doctorates, in going and being on boards. I was on the MASPa board for years, being on committees on MSAA because you know that everything we learn in those outside organizations is going to help the district in educational advocacy at all the levels. And you've supported me in when I sought leadership in, in the MASPa organization and you knew it would help me grow as a leader. You've taken us through a lot of different things. When you came in, you were the business guy. You really were. But you went back, you got your doctorate and, and wow. I am just so amazed at what the educational leader you have become. You led us through professional learning communities at each one of the building levels. You led us through the one-to-one initiative that started at the high school. I believe you even checked out a place out in California at one point in time, way back when. And then you brought that to the middle school. You pushed us to, don't think MCAS, think innovation. And so our innovation initiative and how you have pushed us towards that. And as you're leaving, we are well on our way with a vision of a graduate, personal, global, local, and our Reader's Workshop model at the elementary school. You know, one of the first thing, or one of the things I have truly appreciated, Brad, and I believe all of us as principals, is your, how you respect our families and how much family time is important to each one of us. You made sure I was getting out of meetings so that I wasn't missing Andrew going through high school sports. And you said that is, you need to make that a priority. You need to build your schedule so that you are not missing things. And just through this whole pandemic, your support of, you know, kids in laps and kids crawling over our shoulders or, you know, I don't have that right now. I hope I don't have Andrew crawling over my shoulder. But, you know, if we had to go to a blank screen or something like that, you completely understood. And Brad, we're going to miss you. It was, it completely understand, but at the same time, we truly appreciate everything that you have done for us and good luck.
Peter?
Try not to get choked up here, but Brad, you know, when I came in 2007, you, you know, welcomed me so strongly and especially then when I moved into the principalship the next year or when I moved into assistant superintendent position. Your support and your guidance has been, you know, something that I cherish. I appreciated your, the skill and the knowledge that you brought to the position and your ability to manage the complexities of the superintendency. And I appreciated the passionate way that you approached, you know, all the issues of the district with, you know, kids and people in mind always. I've learned so much from you and, and it's, you know, definitely, you know, part of who I am as an educator is because of you. The support that you show to all of us has been immeasurable. Yet I agree wholeheartedly with what Dave was saying. The support did not come out, come without questioning, without challenging, without critical dialogue, which I always loved, but always felt supported, that I could give you my honest answers on things and that you would tear them apart and make meaning of them with me so that I could come out the other end with even stronger conviction about wherever we were going. Whether it was a bold idea or was pushing for slow and more deliberate change, you were always open to those ideas and helped us to develop them even stronger. That critical dialogue, I think, is a, is a sign of an incredible leader and you are that. I also love the way that she showed that passion. Kind of the glint in your eye that Jamie Cottone talked about, not only with kids in the back of our Zooms, but also the way that you would show that when you reveled in the success of a administrator or a teacher or a paraprofessional or a student, especially a student. You enjoyed seeing those successes and seeing the kids doing their thing and just reveled in your ability to be able to be proud about leading a district that had such great people. And I think that comes to what I appreciate most. When I, I think, to me, the greatest compliment is being just a good person. And, you know, I would definitely define you, you know, ultimately in that way. Someone who cares about people. The family-first aspect is you live it every day and you've encouraged us to live it. Whether, you know, pushing, you know, us to take care of our families while still pushing us to get our doctorates or do the work we need to do. And always, you know, making sure that we balance this work with our lives outside. And so, you know, we could always trust you. We always respected you. You showed us that mutual respect and trust and, you know, we appreciate it in immeasurable ways. Thank you, Brad.
Dan?
Brad has come a long way from that bumpy interview three years ago from Maryland. Wish we had Zoom back then, but I just want to thank you for taking a chance on me. I know it was a risk. Who's this guy from Maryland? But you really changed my life, life of my family. What always amazed me was you're the superintendent of the district and you would ask about my kids and new details about my kids that I was, I was just truly amazed. So I appreciate all of that. And I'm really going to miss the lunches we had. It's been a long time since we've had a lunch. Talking football. Brad worked me hard. He tried to convince me to be a Pats fan. He gave me six very good reasons too, but I'm still hanging on. So anyway, thank you for everything, Brad. You really, the culture you've created in Holliston is second to none. I worked for six superintendents and by far, that culture that you've created is unbelievable. So I really appreciate it and thanks for everything you've done for my family.
Meg?
The principals left me out. I didn't know I should have something prepared. Geez. Anyway, I do, I do just want to highlight two things that everyone has highlighted. I will be forever grateful for Brad's, you know, I would almost call them therapy sessions that he provided me in his office when I was struggling with partnerships or, you know, just looking through, you know, how to support teams. And, and in some magical way, every time, he seemed to actually never give me an answer, but yet pushed me to figure out what was, you know, where was I guiding, what was the appropriate thing? And I can only hope that as I continue to grow as a leader, that I develop some of those character traits that he showed me in many sort of individual conversations we had. The second thing that I just think is unbelievable, given his length of time, is his commitment to his own family. A superintendency is an extremely difficult job and I can only, I, I see his pictures of his beautiful family and the way he talks about his children and I know that they must have sacrificed quite a bit in his lengthy commute and his hours. And I just can't even imagine. I'm forever grateful for his wife, Trish. I've actually never met her, but I feel like she has given me advice via Brad through, you know, conversations. And so I just think that his whole family and what he, like, I bet she's there. What he, what he represents as a father, I think, is just amazing. And you can tell that when you're speaking with him individually as a leader and the decisions he makes for the best interest of students. I think at the end of the day, he is so proud of himself as a father and that has, I think, really carried him successfully through in his superintendency in Holliston. And so I will be forever grateful and hope to replicate some of those traits that Brad has had as a successful leader for such a long time. Thank you, Brad.
Meg, I just need you to stay unmuted for a second, okay? You'll get, you'll get this. Tim Cornley will get it. Sarah Hurn will get it. I don't know how many others. What's this, Meg? What's that?
That's not the upside-down triangle.
It's the upside-down triangle. It's an upside-down triangle. Brad, come on. You sold that to the school committee then. It's like, God, that guy didn't do that up at Shawshing. Brad, we've been together for a lifetime. There's no question about it. You've had 21 school committee members that you've had to break in, you know, through your time here, including the seven here. Stop laughing, Lisa. And, you know.
Some with more success than others.
And, you know, and some of the things that I have enjoyed working with you is things like that, where you and I both have a sense of humor that we like to exhibit. Some people get our jokes, some people don't. You know, some of them are good, some of them aren't. We accept that. Unfortunately, one of our, one of our ongoing ones, Canty, will go away when you leave because it's only two of us who know what that means. Everybody has mentioned family with you. And you helped me through, geez, now I'm going to lose it. What the hell? You helped me through a couple of the toughest times of my life, with Joey's passing, you know, my best friend Jeff. And when I was taking care of Jeff in my house, you said one thing to me, which was, no regrets. You can't have regrets. And, you know, I think that's one of the things, first, I'm going to take with me. But one of the things that you should take with you too, it's no regrets, you know? I mean, you've always tried to do what you wanted to do, the way you wanted to do it, with no regrets. And I think that's an important lesson for all of us, that, you know, as we go through this, none of us are dopes. Well, maybe me, but none of us are dopes. And, you know, we sit there and we try to make good decisions all the time. Brad encourages us to do that. He asks us to be leaders here and do it our way. And, and sometimes you have to do it with no regrets. I mean, do we make mistakes? Showing up tonight might have been a mistake, but it's, it's, you know, we just have to remember that, that, you know, go through life with no regrets. Live life to the fullest. Go through every day. Do the good things that we do for people here in Holliston and do the good things we do with our families. This is the message. This is the theme that Brad has instilled upon us. So please, Brad, understand that. I think we all got it. So you've done your duty here. You've done your work here. Good luck to you in the future. And I'll see you next week when you pick up the rest of your stuff.
Who would have thunk Keith Bidet would be the, uh, the cream on top of the?
So, school committee. So school committee members, Brad has requested, now he, he knew a little something was going to happen tonight and said, please make this the last night of making it about me. So if you want to say something publicly to him, now is your opportunity. Otherwise, you are free to tell him in, in private, but we will not be having another. This is my virtual open house for Brad. So Lisa, do you have something also to speak, say, though, on behalf of the?
Stacy, muted.
Lisa, do you have something to speak on behalf of the Wellness Committee? Did you get an email from Alex?
Oh, thanks for putting me on the spot. No, I did not. We have really been, we have kind of been a little dormant since all of this happened. So we haven't been super active just because of, you know, everyone trying to juggle everything. But I certainly know that we appreciated him being at every single meeting and working with us when, you know, we sometimes jumped up and down over and over again about the same things. Keith and Brad both deserve a lot of credit for not laughing me out of the room when I started trying to get rid of Pop-Tarts. And, you know, I felt like all the work we did on the Wellness Council all the work we did on the Wellness Council was super productive. I mean, there was already a lot of, there's so many good things going on in terms of social, emotional wellness in Holliston that I think, you know, we really realized that our role was going to be more around nutrition and, and movement, which, you know, getting more movement into the day right now is just not something we can really talk about with Corona coming on. Hopefully, parents are enjoying their backyards with the beautiful weather. But no, I, I do want to say thank you on behalf of the Wellness Council for coming to every meeting, for listening to all of our ideas, our ideas, some crazy, some not. Um, and just working with us to try to get everything we could, um, out of, uh, you know, out of, uh, better nutrition and more, um, mindfulness and, and movement. And I'm not going to say anything for me personally because I told my little anecdote a couple of weeks ago and I've already cried like five times tonight and I don't want to cry anymore. So I will, I'm just going to cut myself off right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm sorry. Alex said she was going to email you. So Alex. Sorry, Alex, um, said she was going to email you. She had emailed me last night to say she couldn't join us. So again, from, from the Wellness Council, thank you, Brad. Anne-Louise?
Hey, I am not going to cry this time because I think I've cried out. Um, but I couldn't let the night pass, Brad, without having something to say.
Come on, Anne-Louise, I want a few tears. She gave Meg a whole bunch.
So hard, everyone.
For God's sake.
Everyone thinks I'm some
Do something.
Okay, before I'm done.
Keep your knee against the table. Do something. Fake a tear. Come on.
Uh, so we're, I'm heading into my ninth year, this coming year of being on school committee. So, you know, almost that decade and, um, and yet that wasn't the first time you and I, um, met and, and, um, I, I remember it quite well. It was, you know, long before that I was concerned about something at, I think at the middle school or whatever. Um, and then, you know, it was Erica actually who encouraged me to run for school committee and I'm not sure I knew what I was getting into, honestly. Like I had really no idea. If I'm totally honest. Um, you know, I had things like we all do that we think we're going to change. We had, you know, I had a true passion for education. And, and I remember our very first meeting and, um, somewhere in the meeting you said, you know, what do you, what do you think you want to co-chair? And I, I had some ideas at the time, some crazy ones. Right, right at the outset, student feedback was one of them and, and you kind of looked at me. Maybe I was crazy with that one. Um, and there were others along the way, you know, from the Students Trust Task Force to a host of other things, but I will say this, none of it would have been accomplished without you, without your support and, and making those things happen. It wasn't always easy. There were times, you know, the two of us weren't seeing eye to eye, but I do know this. And I think others have said it. We were both always operating from a place of conviction and passion and deep caring for the students. And I never questioned that with you. And that singularly makes you a phenomenal superintendent. Everything else, your business experience, your insight into education, which I think it was Dave Klein who said it earlier, you know, to be able to get both in one guy or gal um, was really a blessing. And I learned a lot from you along the way. Um, and it took a lot. This is a complex thing. Being a school committee member is, is not easy and to quote unquote, break in 21 of us. I think the last seven might've been the hardest, but, um, there was a lot of training there. There was a lot of training that you had to do for, for all of us. And to hear your principals in particular and the central office staff talk about the great mentor that you've been, know that that is visible. It is visible in our conversations with them. It is visible. You know, as we observe your interactions and most importantly, as we have, as we experience them as their own leaders for each of their buildings or disciplines. And that doesn't come without the right support from the top. And unequivocally, they all have said that about you. And again, that's the mark of a great leader is being a great mentor. Um, and I know you'll bring that to Shawshin. The other thing that probably the public doesn't know, but everybody on this committee knows, and I know all of your staff know, you were one of the hardest working people I've ever met. And I've worked in some pretty hardworking industries where, you know, pulling an all-nighter is just like a foregone conclusion. Um, you're available 24/7, whether it's a text at midnight or a 4:00 AM call with Chief Cassidy to determine if the roads are going to be safe enough to let the school buses go. You, you know, and Keith, it's like, I don't know when you sleep and adding the commute on top of that, it was extraordinary. And I know what that commute is like because I've done it. I did it for 15 years. It's hard when you're tired after a school committee meeting to ma, do a commute like that. So I don't blame you one bit for making this change when the opportunity came up. I, I commend you for putting yourself first and your family first. I hate you for the timing, but I totally understand why you did it. I have had the pleasure of meeting Trish. Behind every great man is a great woman. She's a lovely, lovely woman. And I too have been the recipient, she doesn't even know, of some of her advice through you. And that brings me to my final point, which Keith, Keith mentioned. Family is something that is so clearly important to you and so you respect it in others. And you have always asked about my children. You know where they are. You know what their situations are. And I know those inquiries are sincere and I want to thank you for that. And I also want you to know that I so deeply admired you when you were dealing with some of your own challenges with your family and your daughter's health. And yet you came to work every day and you didn't even really tell us about it right away. And that was pretty amazing that you were able to apply yourself. Maybe you needed to, but it's a remarkable person that can hold up the weight of a sick child, even though she was an adult, and care for his family the way that you did. So I want you to know that was so admirable and impressive. And what an amazing example you have set for your staff, for this school committee. And I'm sorry you're going, okay, there you got your tears. Goodbye.
Andy?
Sure. Uh, well, first of all, Brad, thank you so much for your, your many years of service and dedication. Um, and one of the things I thought about a lot this spring was, um, we as a district and as educators in general, really waded into some pretty uncharted waters. And, um, you really handled, um, the past few months with the same grace that we've watched you handle crisis over the past few years of my being here and others even longer. Um, and I'm just, I continue to be impressed, uh, at your, um, thoughtfulness in, in these types of situations. And so I know that, um, you're going to serve Shawshin very well and it's, um, certainly our loss and I thank you for everything you've done for us. So, thank you, Brad.
Cynthia?
Hi, Brad. I'm going to try to be brief, or I will be brief. Um, I thank you for all that you've done. You're the only superintendent I've ever known, being here in Holliston. The only one my kids have ever known. Many kids in Holliston would be the same thing. So, um, I appreciate your leadership, your dedication. You and I have not always seen eye to eye, sometimes very passionately. Um, but I've never, never questioned your authenticity and your dedication and commitment here to all of our students. So thank you for that and I really wish you the best. I hope you have challenge. I hope you have health and happiness and that you get to take those breaks and vacations and have a balance, a life balance that you need. So, thank you.
Dawn?
Uh, Cynthia, you know he won't have a life balance, but, um, it's nice that you wished him that. Um, I said what I had to say last time and, um, this, uh, and I don't feel the need to reiterate that and, and I just, Brad, this is, this is not goodbye. This is so long for now. Um, professionally and, uh, I know that now we get to move from the professional to the personal and, um, and now I can start swearing to you openly. So that's good. So, um, uh, we'll talk again soon. Godspeed.
Dawn?
Are you going to open your darn gift already or are we all going to be sitting here in suspense?
No, you're going to sit, you're going to sit in suspense for a minute. Dawn?
Thank you, Brad. I know I've only had the opportunity to work with you, um, over this last year, but I want to say thank you. I know you're responsible for many notebook accomplishments during the 16-year tenure, um, as Holliston Superintendent. Uh, you haven't just supported your, um, senior leadership, your school committee members, your teachers, um, all of your educators, but also your students, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. You've attended theater productions, robotic competitions, art exhibitions, athletic competitions. You have been Holliston for the last 16 years. And I also want to recognize you for, um, understanding that our students to be competitive in tomorrow's world would need to do more than just memorize facts for a test. And thank you.
So Brad, I am the last one to speak, so I get to echo everyone's sentiments. Um, I joined school committee on my 40th birthday. And you looked over at the table and told me that you had socks older than me. And I don't know why that sticks with me, but I will never forget that. So I'm glad that you have socks older than me. Um, it has been a pleasure to be in this partnership with you for six years. Um, we have had good times. We've had bad times. We've loved each other, so to speak. We've probably been pissed at each other sometimes. Uh, but I appreciate all of your effort and your time. I want to thank your wife and your family for sharing you with us. I understand, um, how much time you've spent away from your family, whether it's commuting here or, or just being here at all the events that Dawn, uh, just shared. And that's important and we have been so happy to have you, but it's also important to recognize your family. And so Trish, I hope you can hear me. Thank you. You're in for the next couple of best years of your life. I hope you enjoy them. I hope you have fun. And I know for certain that your path is going to cross with mine because we tend to vacation in the same locations. And, um, we have already crossed paths on vacation at both locations. So I am sure I will see on the beach or in the mountains. Thank you for everything and we wish you well. I have the opportunity to speak to this one at Shawshin. And I'd like you to open your present and this person is very excited to talk with you. So this is just a token from the committee. Um, so please open your, your present. You can peek now.
Stacy, there better be socks in there.
You know what? They didn't have any socks.
So I'll read the, I'll read the card later. Oh, a Shawshin tech hat. And my first day of work shirt. I'm going to take this hat off. I look stupid. My first day of work shirt. Who dropped it off? Who do I have? Who's my, who's the inside person at Shawshin? And, oh, another one. Shawshin Tech Rams. Thank you.
That's for, those are for your casual Fridays.
Thank you.
So I met Joe Gore, the, um, the, the, he's a, um, teacher and he runs the school store. Um, but it was actually my best friend who dropped it off today for you. There's one more little thing in there. It's from Holliston and it's kind of just a cute little like reminder of, of some of the epic times you've had here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, can I, um, say just a few words tonight? Um, I know that this is a very long meeting. Um, and we haven't even started the agenda, but I've been here 16 years and this is my last meeting. So I'm going to talk for five minutes and if people turn me off, they turn me off. Um, I've been thinking a lot about this week, a lot this week about, um, I'm going to tell a story, Jamie, so you can, Jamie Cottone, so you can be happy, but I, um, I've been thinking a lot of this week about, uh, uh, a seminal time in my life. Um, and it happened when I was eight years old. Um, it was in, I'm going to even, I won't even do, I'll do the math for you. It was in April of 1965 and we had just been, uh, been in Cohasset for three years and my father ran for the Board of Selectment in Cohasset. And he ran against a gentleman whose last name was Northnagle, who had been on the Board of Selectmen since the Second World War. And he was the, uh, which back in 1965 was only 25 years. So, um, but, um, and he was the Commodore at the Yacht Club. This guy knew everybody. And my father worked and worked and worked and had a committee and worked and worked and worked. And on election night, I wore my shirt and my tie and my dad brought me to my elementary school. And we stood in the gym and the town clerk announced the, um, results. And I was only eight and I wasn't really paying a heck of a lot of attention to the numbers. But instantaneously, I saw the look of disappointment in my father's eyes. And he had lost by 14 votes. And he, uh, he saw me looking up at him and he immediately kind of changed his expression, grabbed me by the hand and walked over to congratulate Commodore Northnagle on his reelection. And I, at this point in time, was pretty upset and pretty tired probably, and I think I showed it. Um, and I asked him, what are, what are you going to do now? And he said to me, we are, I'm going to find another way to serve Cohasset. And that was the beginning of the, um, of my life story to be in public service. Um, I, um, and I have, as all of you on the school committee are doing now, um, I have volunteered, um, as a public servant and I've also had the opportunity to uh, make a career of it and make a living out of it. And I am incredibly blessed to have the opportunity to make a living and to make a difference. And it is a blessing that I, is indescribable and next to the, next to the accomplishment that I consider my, my four children to be with my wife, um, I consider my, uh, work in Holliston to be my greatest accomplishment. BJ Craig, um, the press secretary in the West Wing, um, at one point in time in the last season said to Danny Concannan, Danny, don't you realize? I do realize I'm living the first line of my obituary. And as morbid as that may sound, Holliston is going to be the first line of my obituary. And God willing, that will be dozens and hundreds of years away. But, um, this place is incredibly special to me. And I know it's time for me to go when my advice is given back to me. And, um, I leave, I was racked with guilt about leaving Holliston at this moment in time. And one of my incredible colleagues And one of my incredible colleagues came up to me and said, you always say family first. And if you mean it, then you should do this. And as Keith said, do it with no regrets. And so I leave Holliston with no regrets. I leave it, I hope, better than I found it. I hope that you find a leader who can who can take what I've left and what we have left and build upon it and make it even more extraordinary. I hope you can find a leader who will support these incredible educators that I leave behind. Because they are the heart and soul of the Holliston Public Schools. And they are the ones who deserve accolades and deserve your thanks. Because I have never spent a day teaching in a classroom. And that is the work of angels. And that is the work that we should honor and we should praise and we should support. And Holliston's teachers and Holliston's administrators are extraordinarily talented and deserve extraordinary levels of support from the committee and from the community. And I thank you all for the support you've given me. I thank you for these gifts. I thank you all for the gift of friendship, which I will keep with me. And I will and I'll let you guys I'll let the school committee buy me the first rounds of drinks down at the down at the conference in Hyannis in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. All right. It is 8:55. It is to it's time to kick this meeting in gear, move on to our business. So thank you to Olive Iron, invited guests. It was great to have you. And I know that Brad appreciated that. And it was so great to have you all. So it is time. We are bumping back up to presentations. And it's time for the building administrators just to take this opportunity to give us a quick summary of the school year pre COVID because we know what COVID was like. But just to give them an opportunity to share with us how the year was. And so I will I'm not sure who wants to go first, guys. Take it away.
Hi Stacy, I'm going to go first. And I think you're actually going to hear us talk a lot about remote learning because we're so we've so much to share about it. And we think it's something that we really are proud about and want to share with you. In my 20 years of education, the last three months has been probably the most challenging, yet also some of the most rewarding moments. And I liken it to the metaphor that we were charged with building the plane, flying the plane. No one had ever seen the plane before. We didn't really know what the plane looked like. And the parts weren't all in. So we built it as we flew it. And then the blueprints kept changing every other day. And then we would get feedback and then we'd change it again. And we just worked and worked to fly that plane. And what happened was that our administrator, our leaders and our teachers and our paraprofessionals and all of our educators just rose to the challenge. And we did get lots of feedback. And it was good to get feedback because one thing about Holliston educators is that they are reflective and they want feedback. And we changed the plans based on that feedback. And our educators at Placentino joked that we felt like we were in a Dr. Seuss book. We zoomed, we loomed, we bloomed, we razzed, we seesawed. And through it all, our educators grew, reflected, and improved. And while nobody would ever wish for a pandemic, what we noticed was the collaboration increased, the content deepened, and we reached beyond what we usually do to figure out how to meet the needs of every child. And through it all, our educators never said no. Not once can I recall a Placentino educator ever saying, no, I'm not going to do that. It was, I'm going to try. And they really embodied the growth mindset that we teach our students at Placentino. And I think that some of the feedback that we get, while it's important, some of the feedback that you don't hear is some of the emails that I get about how amazing our teachers are. And some of the anecdotes that I've heard lately is you've kept our world spinning. I'm an ER nurse and my six year old's world was falling apart. And I emailed his teacher and the next morning that teacher had that child at a table with the coloring book talking about how they felt. Another parent said, we watched a math video and it wasn't our child's teacher because we shared content asynchronous videos across our building. And we emailed that teacher and that teacher didn't know us and zoomed with my child to help us with a lesson. The stories just continue and continue, which is a tribute to the educators in Holliston about their ability to reflect and grow and to do whatever it takes for our students. So while you know, we sometimes think we want to just talk about pre COVID, it's there's a lot of lessons and accolades that I think happened during COVID. Finally, we're really excited about our summer learning website. It's up and it's live. So families are going to be receiving an email about that in the next day or two. It used to be, as of this morning, it was remote learning. Now it's summer learning. And I can speak for Mr. Kime on this as well. It's pre K to five. And it has learning ideas and activities for all students, incoming kindergarten, preschool, all the way to fifth grade. In addition, we have a rich literature diverse book list for our students to engage in. And we're really proud of it. And then finally, as Mr. Morton mentioned, by the way, Andy, it was amazing seeing Jane drive by today. We had this amazing parade of our second graders. It was so fabulous to see students. And we made an asynchronous video of a parade for our other students to be able to enjoy, which they're going to be able to see. So that's what's happening at Placentino.
Thank you. Mr. Kime?
Here I am. Jamie, thank you. Jamie just talked about the resources that we will be putting up. I was fortunate to be a part of one of the parent communication evenings a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things we talked about were rituals, routines, and resources. Jamie just talked to you about the resources. But I think many of you have lived through the rituals that we tried to keep constant over the last couple weeks, couple months. You talked about the fifth grade moving up ceremony. You talked about the variety show. We did parades that we've never done before. Other schools did their own things. I'll let them talk about some of the things that they've done. Tried to do videos for second graders coming in that teachers could share. All things that we want to keep in place so that the remote learning experience is real. And we are going to go back. We will be back someday. And so we want to make sure that those those rituals are staying with us. We had a ritual today. We usually do a boxed lunch staff meeting. And and we had a Zoom lunch at 12:45 today. And at that Zoom lunch, we recognize our retirees. And so, you know, somebody spoke for each teacher and it really you could see the weight off of people's shoulders. Today is June 18. Today is the last day of school. And you could see, you know, you could see the pride in the teachers' faces, the paraprofessionals' faces of the work that they've done over the last three months, the whole year, honestly, the whole year. But as Jamie talked about, these last three months, as we all know, were something that none of us really expected. Another thing we talked about on that evening were routines. We are into summer. And one of the things I expressed very clearly was, we need to put the brakes on. Families need to put the brakes on and take a breath. Not only families, but teachers need to take a breath. I think everybody has felt like they've been going 100 miles an hour down the road. And, you know, let's take a breath. We need to set routines, summertime routines, but those routines are much different than than the routines that we have when we have remote learning going on. We need to think about mindfulness activities we can do every day, getting outside and exercising every day. And one of the things positive out of this whole experience is the family time that I have seen more family spending together, whether it be at meals, whether it be walks outside, whether it be game night, whether it be movie night, but family time. And so spending time with family. And you'll see the resources that are up there. If people want to use those resources over the summer, they're they will be posted for for us to see. So thank you, everybody. Thank you for your support. Brad, Meg, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kime. Happy summer. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, as as Mr. Kime and Dr. Slaney kind of indicated, you know, this has been, this has definitely been a ride for sure. One that's been both physically and mentally exhausting for families, for students, for administrators, but especially for for teachers. The uniqueness of this environment, I as a former teacher and as administrator evaluating teachers, what it goes into in a normal environment to put together an engaging lesson for a student in a typical environment is is God's work. It is. It is something that takes an incredible amount of work and and effort. And as Brad said, it, you know, the, you know, angels work, it is, it is, it is a monumental task that our teachers did did and put together with limited resources, being at home with their own lives, managing their own children during that period of time. I additionally, I'm incredibly proud of our paraprofessionals. This is usually a group that receives more of a directive of what they're doing. But just to see them be so incredibly flexible and willing to dive in with students and just, I can't tell you kind of once we're about a week into this and what the once this is looking permanent, actually hearing from paraprofessionals, where do you need me? Where do you need me to hop in? Who do I need to reach out to? And their ability to kind of hop in. We started the school year in almost fortuitously around personal, local, global as kind of an initiative that we started at the the middle school around personal, kind of your own well being, your own kind of social emotional state, your own reflection. Local, meaning kind of like your interpersonal skills and relationships and how you engage with your community and how you embrace with your community, your community, and how you empathize with each other. And then global is thinking about cultural proficiency and thinking about perspectives that are different than yours and cultures that are different than yours. And as much as, you know, I say that we kind of move slowly through it, you know, the the events of the past, you know, past couple of months have just just shown the value of of that initiative around personal, local, global, and how how important it will be for us to start that next year. You know, Brad, Brad had kind of told me this a long time ago, you know, when we're in a time of great challenge, comes great change too, meaningful change. And we are in a time of great challenge right now. But I think that there are some incredible meaningful changes that are happening in education. And I do look forward to the future. I'd be remiss without announcing that Nicole Murray, who's a special educator, has been a special educator at our school, is moving into the Student Services Administrator role at the at the middle school. And we are excited to have her joining us for next school year. And then Kelly Camp, who is moving to the Student Service Director, who has some gigantic shoes to fill with Meg. But I know Meg trusts and loves loves her as well and knows that she's leaving the district in good hands in Kelly's hands. I am proud of what we've accomplished in this remote learning environment. Our remote learning curriculum, as we've aptly said and called the Rainbow Dock, as families started to to hear about, I sometimes felt that Mrs. Beatty and I were Mr. and Mrs. Rogers on Saturdays, giving out our videos out to families, whoever ever got a chance to see some of those that we were proud of. And and kind of lastly to finish that out is is going into this summer, the summer work that we have, I have great pride around what we've put together for our families for for the for the summer. And as I as I think you'll probably hear from Mrs. Bottomley as well, is that middle school really prioritizes reading for this summer. And what you'll see in our summer reading list is a very diverse and large group, large list of books that I highly encourage our families to sit down with their students and have them work through those books through the summer. Because I think that is, that's going to provide them great time for reflection and conversation with you as we begin a new school year with a clear beacon of effort around cultural proficiency work. So, you know, I do believe that kind of parting remark is encouraging you to engage in your with your child and literacy over the summer. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Bottomley?
So I echo the sentiments that all of my colleagues have shared this evening about the incredible work that our educators, our students, and our families, because I don't want to leave them out as well. I know we are all thankful for the partnership with families and understanding how much of an impact this was on parents and guardians. And I know we all share those same feelings. So I'm just going to highlight a few things that haven't been brought up. One, and this I think really speaks for all four schools in the district, is how relentless our teachers were in trying to reach every single student. There were some students who really struggled in this environment. There are other students who thrived in ways that we weren't predicting. But for some students, they they struggled and they didn't necessarily feel comfortable showing up in a Zoom or a Google Meet session in the beginning. And our school counselors, our teachers, administrators worked relentlessly to try to reach every single student and offer the supports that students needed, that families needed. And I think that's a really important piece to acknowledge because that was really hard work. But I think that also speaks to what we heard in terms of Meg Kamiri and her relentless advocacy of all students and families, Brad Jackson's relentless advocacy of all students and families. And that really goes throughout the entire district. The other piece that I will mention, and this was brought up a little bit, is the desire to preserve a lot of those events, although they may have looked a little bit different, but to preserve a lot of those events throughout the whole school year that our students were really looking forward to. So the parades that happened at the other buildings today, the senior parade that went through the entire town of Holliston, our awards night ceremonies, pops and other concerts that took place that were incredibly difficult to pull off, but they did. Our theater, our spring play, you know, so many different events that were incredibly meaningful to students and to families that looked different in this environment, but were still just as powerful. The other thing I want to highlight is that I think throughout this year, and in particular the last few months, although this is not a challenge we would have wished for, this has been an incredible gift for us to really reassess what's working and what's not. And the opportunity to bring forward into the future the pieces that we care most about, the relationships with students, the structures in place to try to reach all students and families, but to really take hold of those those aspects of our schools and of our learning experiences that are at our core values and leave everything else behind, leave behind what's not working, leave behind the obstacles, leave behind the inequities, the implicit biases, the inequities that are built in. This is an incredible opportunity to move forward in the most positive and beneficial ways for students and families. And I'm really excited about that work. I'm excited about the equity work. I'm excited about some of the pieces, even though they're small pieces that we've we've developed throughout the last couple of months, but that have huge impact. So the fact that we had a number of families who had a much easier time meeting with school counselors because they didn't have to leave their home, they didn't have to leave their workplace, they could just zoom in and zoom out. And so our counselors are talking about preserving that into the future. And so our counselors are talking about preserving that into the future. When we're back in the building, and at some point we will be back in the building, when we're back in the building, we'll offer those in-person meetings, but we'll also offer those Zoom meetings for families who that's a lot better for them in terms of their own family life and their own access. The other thing is I can't imagine any event going on in the future that we're not recording and then making available for families who weren't able to attend. So there have been some really positive aspects that have come out of this. And just amazing stories of teachers going above and beyond, students proposing incredibly creative learning experiences and taking ownership over that learning. And it's been exhausting and exhilarating at the same time. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm excited about what we had, the opportunity that we have ahead of us. And the, we were collaborative before this, but we are collaborative now. And that also is a really nice aspect of of the last couple of months. So it's been, it's been an adventure and continues to be.
Thank you all so much. I actually, Joan was not going to have questions. That was just, it was just an opportunity for the administrators administrators to share some information and shout out to their teachers, and then we were going to let them go home. What is it that you would like to say, Shaughnessy?
I would like to say thank you to the administrators for everything they've done. As I wrote to you all earlier this year, the the building administrators are the, you're the building lolly columns that have to stay strong when there's a strong reverberation in the earth. And thank you for that. And and we've talked about teachers as angels and and students are the nerve center. Teachers are the heart of our school. And I think we can all agree that paraprofessionals are the soul. So thank you for being the lily, the lolly columns. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you've done, all the support you've given the teachers, everything you've done to engage families. You have done yeoman's work. I I saying thank you isn't enough. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's it, Stacy. Thank you. On behalf of the rest of the school committee, thank you all. We wish you a wonderful summer. Take some time to recharge and spend some time with your families. Happy Lefty School and thank you.
Thank you. Wear your sunscreen.
Meg, don't leave yet. You're next. Okay, we're going to jump right into policy.
Okay.
Cynthia.
All right. Am I on? I'm on. Okay. So in your packet is amendment for policy JKA A restraint of students, which we had talked about last meeting. I did send a memo to the school committee detailing the changes and gave some additional guidance to everyone. If you still have some questions, we invited Meg to stay here so that she can answer a few for you. Otherwise, I would appreciate if we could approve this policy as amended and move forward. Thank you. Anybody? Are you feeling good? All right. Stacy, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Brad? Am I approving the whole, the amendment or the whole policy? Do I have to do two votes, right? First, we're going to approve, no?
Just one vote to to amend the policy JKA A as presented.
Is there a motion?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Ann Louise.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Ann Louise. All in favor, roll call vote. Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
And I had to step away for bedtime duty. JKA A.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Hansdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have a new policy that we are presenting tonight. It is a policy JBD, gender identity support. This is a policy that we started working on back before pre pre-COVID, back in February. In fact, Dawn did a lot of work on this policy. And I also just wanted to give a little shout out to obviously Meg, who has been helping us all the way through this. A parent, Carrie Mullen, who's been really helpful and has attended some of our Zoom meetings. And also Sean Billado, who also offered some some guidance in this policy as well. So this is a first read, so I do have to read, I'm sorry, guys, I have to read the entire policy all the way through. And then I take your questions and we'll, you know, regroup and meet again in policy to review those over. I just want you to know that I did note there's a couple of typos in it as I as I brought it. And I know, Shaughnessy, you were going to point them out for me anyway, but I saw them. So so I'm going to have to read the whole thing as I'm going to try to do it as fast as I can and not stumble. So, okay, all right. Policy JBD, gender identity support. The Holliston Public Schools strives to provide a safe, respectful and supportive learning and work environment for all students and staff. Students who identify as gender nonconforming and or transgender are entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms and changing facilities that are sanitary, safe and adequate, so they can comfortably and fully engage in their school program and activities. Transgender, gender nonconforming students, staff who are uncomfortable using a gender segregated restroom will be provided with a safe and adequate alternative. A component of the student support plan may include name changes and gender identity markers used in communication with and about the student and in written communication with the parent guardians. HPS will not require legal documentation to change the student's name or gender. HPS will work in collaboration with the student and parent guardians to discuss the plan for disclosure regarding changes in name and or gender identity marker. And there should be a paragraph in between here. Gender segregated activities should be avoided. However, whenever students are separated by gender in school activities, students must be permitted to participate in such activities or conform to such rule, policy or practice consistent with their gender identity. To further a safe and supportive school environment for all students and staff, HPS incorporates education and training about transgender and gender nonconforming students into their anti-bullying curriculum, student leadership trainings and staff professional development. There are legal references down at the bottom, and this is our first reading. And I I just wanted to just point out, though, this is really an effort to codify our existing practice and just to strengthen our commitment to this, to our students who identify as transgender, gender nonconforming. And given the political climate that we live in that can be uncertain, I want to ensure that our students are protected in that. So.
And staff.
And staff, sorry, students and staff. Thank you. Yeah. So questions, comments, and Meg is here to offer some help too, I think, too. So, all right, Joan? Other than some Oxford comma insertions, I will skip to the meat of my question. In the second paragraph, it says, a component of the student support plan, la la la. I I read this to mean that because a student has a nonconforming gender identity or is transgender or is transgender would have a support plan. And I think that this policy applies to any student and not students. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, there's an incongruence there. Like, you don't have to be in a support plan to have rights, if you will, as a transgender or nonconforming identity. So I I'm a little confused about a component of a student's support plan. That works. But it's the, it's the use of a support plan. Like, this is a support for any, do you see what I'm saying? I know I'm not being very clear.
That way too, Joan. Could we change it to if, if a, if a student has a support plan, comma, a component may include, can we make that change with this reading and still vote tonight, Brad?
Well, you're only voting, you're only making the first reading, so you can't approve the the policy tonight anyhow. This, this is not, the support plan to which this is referring is a plan that is typically developed with either a student or a staff member who is, who is changing gender or identifying as gender nonconforming. So when we typically, when you meet with a parent and the student who want to share that information, part of that, part of that effort is to talk to them about the process. They want to communicate that, talk to them about how they want to be addressed. And that's, so that's the purpose behind that. I can see why it wouldn't, why you came to a different conclusion. So we should clarify that. But I did want to clarify that orally for you now. It's not as it relates to an IEP or anything else. Do with an IEP.
Right. And that's why I think the language, and I think that the way Dawn changed it actually is the opposite of what I was advocating, because what I'm saying is that if you are a transgender or gender nonconforming student, you don't have to raise your hand to make yourself known or have a conversation with anybody, and you are still entitled to this, these rights, if you will. I'm going to stay away from the support because it's it's getting, it's conflating two different ideas. So I wonder if we could reword this to 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 reflect that a student, a transgender or gender nonconforming student may include name changes or gender identity markers using some communication. And they have the right to communicate with the, I'm not, I'm not doing this very well. It's really okay, Joan, like, if you want to think about some wordsmithing of it. First read, so we're going to meet and regroup. So if you think about it. All right. And then just send that off to us and then we'll just rehash it. I think I understand what you're trying to say, but. Yeah, I'm not being very clear. I apologize. It's okay. I'm sorry. There were some people who who can't get on to the Facebook and I was trying to help them. And anyway, I should just keep my focus at the meeting. I will, I'll send those to you along with my. Yeah. Commas. Please give me all of the Oxford commas. So if anybody, and that goes for anybody else in the committee, if you're reading this and you're thinking that there's suggestions that you have, this is, again, it's a first read, so we're going to regroup at our next meeting. And I would really love it if we could get this in and do a second read and at least, you know, have this on the books. It does not escape me that this is June and Pride Month, and wouldn't it be nice to have this in the books? But that being said, I respect the process and everyone has to have their, you know, hands in to figure out whether what makes sense. So. Okay. And so I guess that's it for me. And and Meg, no heavy lifting. Thank you for being here, though.
Yeah.
I always appreciate the support, that's for sure. Articulated better than me, that's for sure.
Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful.
Thank you, Meg. You too. Thanks so much. I am going to jump down to new business for a minute because I'd like for Nicole to go through the handbook changes because I'd like to let her go as well. So Nicole, give some amendments to the student handbook.
Thank you. So I have a few to to speak about tonight. A couple of them are related, though. So I want to start with the first one and and really focus some time on this one because I think this one probably needs the most explanation. And it is the elimination of a decile rank. So currently, you know, we don't, we don't list our our students in terms of graduating order, like, you know, one, two, three, four and and so forth. But we currently still have in our, in our procedures, a decile rank, so top 10%, 20%, 30% and so forth. And frankly, we're we're pretty far behind a lot of other schools who have already eliminated this. It is, according to the majority of colleges these days and high schools, a little bit of an antiquated way to look at at our students. And we have spent, our school counselors have spent really the last year, year and a half, looking at this, looking at some of the research, talking to different schools, high schools in the area as well as colleges. And what we'd like to do is eliminate this decile rank. Currently, we only use it primarily for three reasons. So one is to invite students to apply to NHS based on their QPA or their quality point average. So right now, when a student has their transcript, what is on their transcript is actually an unweighted GPA. So on their report card or their transcript, it lists the GPA, and that's what's sent off to colleges. There is also a quality point average, which assigns a, and it's a very complicated, kind of convoluted equation, but it assigns points based on the the level of the class that you're taking. So we use that currently to assess that a student with a minimum of 28 quality points, and again, I don't want to get into the details of the formula, would receive an invitation to apply to NHS. That's one reason. A second reason is to determine valedictorian and salutatorian based on the QPA or the quality point average. And then the third is to occasionally use this to report to colleges. When we've done the research and we've looked at the benefits and the drawbacks of having a decile rank, what our school counselors and what our administrators have come to the conclusion of is that, for the most part, this does way more harm than good. And so we've looked at the pros and cons of having the decile rank. And as I said, most schools and 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 most schools in this area have have done away with that as well. Really, if you look at a couple of different kind of categories, so we have some kids that are just outside that top 10%. So at 11% or 12%, again, we don't give that, it's just the 10%, 20% and so forth. They really can be penalized by this in terms of being right on the verge there. Also, when you look at, and I I recognize that I'm biased in saying this, but I feel like Holliston High School gives a tremendous education and we have very strong classes and strong students. And when you look at our school compared to another school that might not be as strong, and again, I recognize my bias in saying this, but it might not be as strong. If that school doesn't have a decile rank, there are times where a college might accept a student who maybe compared to our course and rigor isn't quite as strong. But because they don't have that decile, there's an inequity there. And so it ends up potentially doing more harm. It also really does not give a true picture of the student. It doesn't give that holistic picture of the student. So we've heard over and over from from colleges that it does not penalize a student in any way if the high school doesn't have a decile rank, that most schools these days are really getting rid of it. That if a college is looking at students from, who are applying from the high school and those students don't have, you know, the high school does not offer a decile rank, then that's fine. It's just not something that they look at. The College Board had a quote, "Due to the tremendous differences in curricula and grading standards at different high schools, many admissions officers, especially at selective private colleges, have begun to discount the accuracy and importance of class rank as a factor in evaluating students." And what we hear is that it's really not one of the primary factors, and it's it's definitely less important for college admissions. We also have had some some different experiences where one, and I won't name the school, but one particular school, a pretty top-level school, does not require rank. And many schools that are sending students there are not supplying rank. And yet, if we provided it for a few students, the school then required us to provide it for all students. And that, again, has a really negative impact on many of our students as they're they're going to apply for school. The other thing is just philosophically, we just don't believe we should be providing metrics that allow a student to be measured necessarily on sort of relative to peers, but more on what they can do. If we're thinking about growth mindset, if we're thinking about equity, if we're really thinking about making sure that all students are supported and we can demonstrate the growth that the student has had from the start of their, you know, schooling, the start of their their freshman year to senior year, it's just not an accurate portrayal of of their growth. It's not an accurate portrayal of who they are. And so we're looking to eliminate that and and really just move forward with our unweighted GPA. So that's the one that I think probably. So that's the one that I think probably, um, needed the most explanation. And I wanted to make sure that we supplied a lot of data to back that up because again, what we're seeing is that, that it really does more harm than good. So I can stop there and answer any questions, or I can just keep going through the other, the other ones. I don't know.
Nicole, can you stop at this one so we can? Andy, you have a question?
Sure. Um, so is this effective immediately for next year? Or is this something that will be phased in over the course of, for example, starting with freshmen?
Um, so I, I would like it to be effective starting next year. You know, I, I think there's a real inequity here. I think we're doing harm to kids and I don't want to wait to put this into, into place.
Thanks.
Emily?
So I, this is just a question, point of clarification. The, I, I understand the rationale for all of this and, um, I don't disagree, Nicole. I think, I mean, there are times when it can help a student, like if you're sitting in the top, top decile, it works great for you, right? But I've also experienced just being at like 11% or something and it can be harmful, I think. Because schools don't, it's, it's a wide, deciles are wide too, by the way. So, you know, you don't really know how that's helping or hurting on the back end there. But I do have a question about the unweighted GPA because often when this is the case, when, when it's just GPA, courses that are more advanced or more challenging are on a five-point scale, if you will. So have you considered that or how you would look at this?
So Dominique Ross, who is the School Counseling Department Leader, could do a much better job of explaining all this than I could, and she's incredibly articulate. She volunteered to be here this evening, but, um, fairness to what they have on their plate right now in terms of the master schedule and everything, I, I didn't want her to, to take on one more, one more thing. So I'm doing my best to answer for her. So what we hear from college admissions officers across the country, really internationally, is that they recalculate GPA as soon as the application comes across. So every single school, you know, one school, it might be out of a four, one out of a 4.3, one out of a 4.25. Our full year classes are one credit. Huffington's full year classes are five credits. It, it's, there is no consistency across the board with that from school to school. And so what the admissions officers do is they recalculate that the, the second it comes across their desk. So it doesn't really, um, so I think that the, what, what we hear is that what they're looking at is the courses that the student has taken. If you are at a high school that does not offer AP classes, and there are several high schools that don't offer AP classes, and there are some really high performing schools that have done away with AP classes. If you are at a school that does not offer AP, the colleges will look at what is the highest level that your school offers? And did you avail yourself of those opportunities? So if honors was the highest that we offered, did that student who's trying to apply to a, you know, challenging school, did they avail themselves of those honors classes? Did they fill their schedule with that? That's one piece of it. They're also looking at the types of courses that the student has taken, the titles of them. They're looking at the, the essay. They're looking at what are the unique experiences of this particular student? What did they do during their time that sets them apart? I mean, I think, uh, a few school committee meetings ago, um, there was the discussion of one of our, our juniors who created the app for the food pantry so that, or for, for food pantries across, across the state so that you can figure out what is it that your local food pantry needs so that you can be of assistance. Something like that is going to make, and she's a strong student, but something like that is going to make her stand out so much more than a weighted or unweighted GPA. So I know this is a long-winded answer and I'm sort of dancing around, but it's, it's because the schools are really looking at the, the type of classes the student's taking, why they want to apply to that school, and what is it unique about that student? And so that's, that's what we're looking at in terms of the, the GPA.
I mean, I'm, I'm well, too, too well aware of, you know, reviews. I just was curious. I mean, if a GPA is worth anything at all, it should be somewhat reflective of the difficulty of the courses as well. But I know the transcripts will state it's a raw unweighted GPA, and you're right, they do recalculate them. So, you know, I don't, I don't have a strong point of view on that. I'm just curious. And, and I actually think it's a good thing that it's the unweighted GPA for NHS because, well, that's like a whole nother conversation, NHS. But I think NHS should be more than just, um, I think the other pillars are so important and the academic screening criteria is critical. But, but I, I do like the fact that I, I think will actually allow more students to become eligible and I don't think that's a bad thing. The only place where it strikes me as tricky is the valedictorian's salutatorian. Because for that one calculation, and I know, I know you know this, it's so precise because it can get down to a tenth of a point between what one student has taken and achieved versus another. How will you do that with a raw unweighted GPA?
So we will look at the raw unweighted GPA. What, we ran the calculations this year. We ran who the top 10 students, and again, I'm not releasing that information publicly, but we would, you know, we, we would, um, we ran who the top 10 students would be based on the quality point average, so based on the weighted QPA, and who the top 10 students would be based on the unweighted GPA. And our valedictorian and salutatorian would be the same two students. It would not have made one difference this year. Last year, our valedictorian would have been the same person. There was a little bit more fluctuation last year. I mean, again, tiny. But for this year, our top four students were exactly the same based on QPA or GPA. So, you know, I think in looking at that, and I, and I could go back and, and run that for the last several years. I just, with the transition between Power School to IPass, it's not quite as easy to, to jump into that. But it would not have changed the valedictorian or salutatorian for this year at all. It would have been the same kids.
Well, I mean, this year, yeah, it's a data point of mine, but in theory, I'm just throwing this out. You could have a 4.0 in, you know, mid-tier courses and that's not the same as a 4.0 in, you know, all AP and honors courses. So I, I don't know how you would look at that if the calculation was the same, if you will.
Um, I mean, all, all I can say is that, that in doing the calculations for, to look at who, you know, as I said, for this year, it, it would not have made any difference at all. It would have, the valedictorian would have been the same for QPA and GPA as well as, um, so the unweighted or the weighted, as well as the salutatorian. Last year, the valedictorian would have been the same person. So, you know, I, and I would imagine if I went back several years, I would see that same trend. So I think that in schools that have, um, done away with any kind of decile ranking, and like I said, um, the majority in this area have, in schools that have done that, they've done sort of one of two things. Either they've, or I guess one of three things. One, they have looked at the unweighted GPA and they have determined the valedictorian and salutatorian based on that. The second is that they have gone more of the route of an essayist. So they have students who will write their speeches and submit those speeches. And there's a panel that determines who is going to speak at graduation. Um, and then the third is, uh, sort of some creative out of the box thinking in, in different areas, depending on the school. But, um, you know, most of the schools are, are in those two categories of either having, um, students supply speeches and, and speak at graduation or just go based on the unweighted GPA. And I think that's because most of the schools don't see, um, you know, that when they do the calculations, it wouldn't have changed, but I can't speak for, for the calculations at those schools, obviously.
All right. That's helpful. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding? No. Nicole, you want to keep going?
Sure. Um, so based on that, then we had just mentioned NHS. So we, uh, our school counselors had met with Joe Jose, who is the NHS advisor this year and will continue to be the NHS advisor next year. He has, um, he's made some changes to the, to NHS procedures already this year and continues to look at revising and making changes for next year. We've spoken with him because currently, as I said, it's a 28 QPA, uh, in order to have that letter inviting students to apply. So he has looked at it. He's met with the school counselors. They've gone back and forth. He's reached out to other schools to see what they do for NHS. Our school counselors have done the same. And so he would be looking at changing that to just a straight 3.5. So if your GPA is a 3.5, you receive that letter inviting you in to apply and then you would go through the application process. One of the things he did this year is he changed the application process to be electronic, pre-remote learning. So the timing was great because it meant that that system was already in place. But so we would be switching that to just a straight 3.5 because we wouldn't have the, the QPA anymore. And so that sort of goes along with that. The, do you want me to stop after each one? Or you want me to just run through the next few and then we can jump back?
Um, I, did anyone have any questions? I think you can, all right, keep going.
Um, all right. So then the next one is, um, asking you to look at the school committee policy because I recognize that there's a school committee policy around excusing absences for college visits. So again, this comes from our, the conversations with our school counselors. Currently, the school committee policy, as, as you know, is to excuse for two college visits for seniors and one for juniors. The school counselors have felt the last couple of years, based on feedback from families and feedback from students, that that is too restrictive. There are a number of students and families who would like to go and visit more than those two schools. And they feel like they can't always fit those in in April vacation or, or in various other times where it doesn't impact. In particular, this year, I think what we've heard from our junior families is the real concern that colleges and universities were essentially shut down the last couple of months. And so they have not had that opportunity to go. So what we're asking is to, um, really just remove that restriction on college visits for juniors or seniors. And so we just won't have that restrictive number in there anymore. We'll adjust that. And, um, if a student wants to go look at a college and university, then that's wonderful and we support that. And especially looking at next year, I think we're going to have a lot of families that, um, you know, feel like they're, they're playing a little bit of catch-up. I don't know this summer what is going to be available in terms of students coming to tour schools because there are some schools that, you know, aren't opening yet. There are some schools where they've, they've shifted their freshmen showing up until the end of August. Some are actually going the other direction so that they can get everything in before Thanksgiving. I mean, we just don't know what the landscape is going to be. So we're looking to, um, we're really looking to make that more accessible for families. And then, um, our, our next one around transcripts is actually really straightforward. It just reflects a change that happened during this, this year. And that was, um, a lot of feedback from school committee members and, um, over the last two years, just in terms of our transcripts. So it's just changing the language to reflect no longer charging the $5 for transcripts past, you know, the, the initial transcript that's sent to colleges. And also just putting in some parameters around, uh, the amount of notice we need and the days we need to, to create those transcripts. We're also working, and it's not in here, but we're working with Dan McLeod on, um, the behind the scenes aspects of Power School to be able to at least create unofficial transcripts so that families who need those have a little bit more access to those. That's a work in progress right now. So again, this is pretty straightforward language. It really reflects the change, uh, that would, that was underway during the year. And then the last one, we have a procedure in our handbook right now that looks at a loss of credit due to absences. So independence, if you separate out the grade earned in the class from the attendance, our policy or our procedure right now in the student parent handbook says that if a student misses six times in a term, 12 times in a semester or eight, 18 times in a free term course, that regardless of the grade that they earn for the class, they would not receive credit for that class because they've missed too many times. On the surface, that seems reasonable. What we've seen over the last several years, if you look at this through an equity lens, there's a significant equity issue with this. First of all, we, we excuse for doctor's notes and dentist's notes, um, court dates, psychiatry appointments. So there's a lot that we're already excusing for. It's very rare that a student loses credit because of absences. And for the students who are exceeding these absences, it's almost always because there's a significant mental or physical, um, health, you know, concern with that student. The student maybe was hospitalized with pneumonia for two weeks and so they've missed that and that's going to be excused. So this is rarely, um, put into place because of those extenuating circumstances. We also look at this as a real equity issue. So for families who have the financial means and the ability to take their students to the doctor when they are not feeling well, to receive that doctor's note and bring that note into school, their absence is excused. For a student who does not have that ability, they end up being penalized because they were absent when they weren't feeling well. In addition to that, clearly, the last few months have shown us that we need to be a little bit more flexible in how we navigate the attendance. And for next year, uh, you know, I can't predict what, what model we'll be using for next year, but we know we need to continue that flexibility. And so we're looking at really just taking this out of the handbook. So those are the different ones. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions about those. Like I said, I thought the first one probably needed the most explanation and the rest are fairly straightforward. But I am happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Cynthia?
So, um, I just had a question about the app, the excused absences for visiting colleges. And I think our handbook says, and actually, we talked about switching it because I think it says two in the senior year and one in the junior year. And that seemed backwards at one point. We were talking about whether that should be shifted. But if, um, we're not, I, I'm, I like, I don't have any, I mean, we can talk about it and have it eliminated. I don't know if I feel strongly one way or the other about it. But, um, I'm wondering, is there like a limit? Like, can they, can, or is it just, you can ask for, you know, six absences to go look for, you know? I don't know. Like, are we going to have any cap on that? Or is it, are you just leaving it open-ended and it'll be dependent on the student or the individual circumstance and not a broad-reaching policy? Is that the sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I think that for next year, we really need to leave it open. I, the, the rising seniors in particular have really missed, uh, the feedback we've had from families, right, is that they've really missed out on the opportunities the last few months to go and to look at schools and to tour schools. So I think what we'd like to do for next year is really leave it open-ended and not put that cap on it. See how it goes, evaluate it throughout the year. If we feel that we need to put a cap on, then I'll be right back here again in June next year and we can be, you know, changing that policy. But I think that it's important to look at how, how that's going to go for next year. What I have found is that the best way to have students remain in classes is the relationships with teachers and with school counselors, right? So if we're seeing that a student is missing days, the first thing we do is try to figure out why are they missing those days? Is there a health issue? Is there, you know, are they taking care of a family member? And so if, if, if the answer is that they're missing several days because they're going to visit schools, I think the logical thing would be for the school counselor to have that conversation with the family. How can we support you? Earlier, I spoke about all of the unintended benefits of the last few months. One of them is that there are a number of colleges and universities that have actually created virtual tours. So that again, for students who don't necessarily have the financial means or, or the ability to go travel across the country to visit schools, there are now so many virtual opportunities, really well-done, 3D virtual opportunities for students to tour schools. So I think, you know, a combination of being more flexible for those families that need to go and see schools as well as having the conversations and making those resources available. I think we'll be in good shape for next year. But we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Emily?
I think it makes a lot of sense, I, and not just because of the current environment. I think one of the challenges that you have when you're looking at colleges is that unless you're interested in going to school within three hours, it's a trip. And it's very hard to pull that trip off if you're going, you know, starting to look at eight or nine hours or there's a flight involved. And then what you're trying to do is cram it all in over the holidays and it's, it's not easy. So I think giving parents flexibility and as long as the guidance counselors know that that's what the issue is. I mean, you gotta, I, I, I think when you're balancing like, oh, I'm looking to go to college, I'm not going to be missing not going to be missing half of my senior year and, and tanking my grades to get there. So I, I think, I think it's a good policy to, to relax or eliminate. I don't know. I did have one more question for you, or no, it's more of a comment. You didn't mention it because I know the, there's a lot here, but one of the changes is the, in the new language for NHS is the shift in hours from, from 15 per semester to 30 across the year with a minimum of five during each semester. And I just wanted to mention, I spent a lot of time working with Ron Sudmeyer, Joe Cosay, and Matt Baker reviewing a lot of the policies for NHS. And one of the concerns after three kids going through this was that some of the restrictions around the NHS hours were so, they were so inflexible, right? And the 30 hours may not seem like a ton, but it is when you're involved in a gazillion other things, and a lot of those kids are. And especially if they're athletes. So if you're involved in a fall sport, trying to pull off 15 hours may be extremely difficult, but you might not be in a winter or spring sport. So we asked them to consider allowing students to, to serve their, their 30 hours when it suits their schedule. It's, it's no less of a commitment, but if it's easier for them to do that in one term or one semester, they should be able to do that. The, the five per semester, Joe brought up a valid point. He said, we, we want to make sure they don't like save it all for the last week of school. So that made sense to me. So I understood why that he did that. And I just wanted to say thank you to him because he was a good listener and he heard out loud the concerns and had some good suggestions. And I think that's a very good change in there.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I, I, I agree. I think he's looking at that really through a lens of flexibility and understanding that there are a lot of demands on students' time. And part of it is their, their development of, of skills around time management, but it's also being able to prioritize and know this semester is going to be a little bit heavier in terms of activities next semester won't be. And to allow for, for that flexibility there as well.
Yeah, yeah, so that was good. Thank you.
So that just, Emily, you sort of mentioned it, but I guess the question is, so, is we're not going to change the 30 hours to be more flexible? We're going to leave it with the?
No, we did. It looks like she did. They, it, it used to be 30 hours per year, 15 per semester. It's still 30 hours, but five have to be done in the first semester and five in the second, but you could do the remaining 20 whenever you want.
Oh, across all four, across four years, not?
No, no, in a year, no, in one year.
A year. Yeah, so it used to be, it used to be that it was really split in half. So you would have 15 hours in the first half and 15 hours in the second half of the year. For students who have a little bit more availability in their schedule the first half of the year, there are a number of events in the first half of the year that students can complete their hours. I will say that one of the other reasons, so part of it is the flexibility around student schedules and then being able to figure out what makes the most sense for them. The other piece of it is there do tend to be more events in the fall and the winter, just sort of by the nature of our school schedule and our calendar and what we have going on. So to allow students to do more of those hours in the fall also makes a lot of sense. We do still really rely on our, our NHS students as guides during open house evenings. So knowing that we have one in the first half of the year and one in the second half of the year, it makes sense also to maintain a few hours in each semester so that we can rely on their support to help parents and guardians navigate their way through the halls of Holliston High School. But really allowing for that flexibility throughout. And, and a lot of that feedback also came from the NHS members and from the NHS officers. And I think they felt really good about this solution. And, and again, you know, he'll try it for next year. And I have no doubt that at the end of next year, he'll have more adjustments to make as he receives more feedback from students and families. And, you know, he'll continue to, to make any improvements that, that he thinks will be beneficial to the club.
Yep. Thank you. I just was having a, I was being a dope, as Keith would say, for a minute. Are there any other questions from the committee on any of the changes? So I'm taking it, Nicole, that the removal of the policy regarding college visits, that the policy subcommittee will be able to take that under advisement and take it to one of our upcoming policy subcommittee meetings? Okay, good, okay. And then do we need to?
However, you could provide the policy subcommittee with some guidance by approving the change to the handbook so that we can publish it. So that, it's, it is a little unorthodox and it is backwards. But if you were so inclined, since we only publish a handbook once a year, you know, I, I think we'd both appreciate a little flexibility here. Actually, it's a lot of flexibility here because this is, in terms of process, it's, it's backwards, but.
I don't have a problem with it. I think we can, we'll be, we'll, we can vacate that at like a next meeting, right?
And address it on Monday.
Yeah.
And I guess my only other sort of question or hesitation or caveat is for the first, for the first part of this, the editing of the information regarding class standing, I feel like we're going to hear back from a lot of people or many people or vocal people about this. And I'm wondering if, if we approve this tonight, you know, can we review it throughout the year with the focus of the grad, the vision of a graduate? And I'm just, I'm a little hesitant, I, because I feel like I'm, we're going to get some feedback on this. And I can't speak to it because I'm not entrenched with a high school student just yet. But I do, I'm, I have a little bit of hesitation, but I guess I'm looking towards my colleagues who do have high school students, how you feel about this and I, and certainly.
Stace, I, you know, this is an issue. Are, are you, are you talking specifically about going from eliminating the deciles or going from QPA to GPA?
Well, both, actually, both, but.
The origination of going to deciles at all, the, the history on this is that it started with class rank. I'm number one, two, three, I'm number 27. And that started falling away years ago because it was creating such extraordinary competition and stress that it was backfiring on, on student health. So high schools began migrating to deciles, sometimes quintiles, quintiles, to eliminate that, oh, you're first, I'm second, you know, whatever, and, and mask it a little bit. But what, what is interesting, what Nicole is saying is, is very, very true, that especially among more competitive schools, but I believe most schools today, you submit your transcript and what they do is pull out the course, like, they may take out, I hope nobody takes this the wrong way, they may take out wellness from your GPA. They may not calculate that in as a core course, or they may take out something else. They take your transcript and calculate the GPA. And you don't even know what it is, by the way, as a student. So your ranking is irrelevant because in that context, they're calculating who you are and comparing you to kids from all over the country, not comparing you to the other kids in your class. You know, I suppose, I don't know, I suppose that could be different if you had 20 kids applying to the same school and going to the same school, like UMass, maybe you might see that, but I don't think so. I think that's, I think then the schools, you know, within the state, UMass knows the schools within the state, they know the reputation, they know the level of difficulty and the curriculum and all of that. And they definitely, I think from my experience, look at the transcript and know the courses in there, you know? They can, the, the term CP1 is not exclusive to Holliston. A college prep course is, it's a pretty standard term and it's understood to be different than honors, which is understood to be different than AP if, if schools have AP. And many schools don't. So I, I, I don't think it's as relevant as it used to be. Parents with first time graduates may be very nervous about this, but I think it will favor kids more than it will. I, I'm not sure there's any harm, but I think will actually favor kids.
Okay, no, that was helpful. And Nicole, please, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify because I haven't been in this world since I went to college myself and it has changed. So I just wanted better under, to be more clear on this. Sorry, Brad, I was gonna say.
Stacy, I think your instincts are, 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 are well founded because anytime you make a change, people get nervous. So, you know, I think they, it should accompany an explanation, much like Ms. Bottomly gave two parents to explain the reasoning behind it and to kind of reassure people that the, you know, as to why, why it's not the end of the world. As opposed to they see it and they kind of perseverate on it. And so I think it's important to communicate when we do this, to maybe highlight this change and explain it upfront so that we can kind of get in front of some of that angst.
So, and one other point, Brad, sorry. When you're applying through the Common App, there's still variation from school to school. And some schools will ask for your class rank and you always have the option of reporting it or checking off the box that says not reported, meaning your school does not report your class rank. So if it's not, and, and in some cases, we had to check that because we didn't know where we were in the rank. We knew decile, but that wasn't exactly what they were looking for. So we just checked, well, not reported. So again, I think it's so inconsistent from school to school, meaning high school to high school, that I think colleges don't value the data as highly as, as I think what people think they do.
Okay. Are there any, oh, Finn, you have a question?
No, I was just going to say that, you know, as someone who does have a junior, it is something that I feel like the guidance department is articulating to parents because they definitely, you know, you sit down with them and they go over your, your student's, you know, folder and you ask about like, is this weighted or unweighted or, you know? So they are explaining that because all the way college admissions is changing as well. So it had, it was articulated to me and I felt like, oh, okay, well, this is how they're doing it now. And as soon as, you know, my daughter is, like Aunt Louise was explaining, as soon as she gets into that college, they're going to regroup and decide what her GPA is independent for that school. So it doesn't really matter that much. So, and I, I got, I understood that. I don't know about you, Joan, what your experience was, but.
Yes, and I think as of today or tomorrow, we have seniors, not juniors.
That's a good point. Well, actually, as of graduation, right? Isn't it after graduation, they become the seniors, right? I don't know, they didn't get quite as sassy as I expected.
No, it's the, it's right after our seniors are done, so back.
Technically, you really don't do their graduation ceremony until July 25th?
So you've got a senior. You're in denial, you've got a senior.
So that was, that was helpful. Thank you, I appreciate that. And any other questions? If there's not, I'd like, I will entertain a motion to approve the changes to the Holliston High School Student Parent Handbook for the 2020-2021 school year.
Moved by Dawn?
Seconded by Cynthia?
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Cynthia. Roll call vote? Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Hanshed?
Yes.
Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi?
Yes.
Ms. Bottomly? It is time for you to shut off and go recharge. Thank you so much and have a wonderful summer.
I just wanted to say thank you very much because I know any changes are challenging. And so I, I welcome the conversation and I, I hear the feedback around wanting to make sure we give really good explanation for why we're making those changes. I'm really appreciative though of this committee because I feel like these are changes through the lens of equity that are going to benefit our kids in really positive ways. And I know we have a lot of work to do, but this is yet another step towards that. So I, I really, I thank you. And I know our school counselors are going to be thrilled when I get to tell, hopefully they're not still watching, but I know they're going to be thrilled when I get a chance to tell them. So I just, thank you very much.
All right. Have a great night.
Take the day off, Nicole, tomorrow.
I will try. Bye.
All right. Cynthia, do you just want to give a quick update on the succession plan for superintendent?
Sure. So I just, oh boy, where's all my notes? Okay. So I just wanted to update the committee on our progress for the interim superintendent screening committee. We posted our job description in, on May 29th in school spring at the MAS C website as well as MAS S. We closed the application process on June 12th with 28 applicants. We chose nine candidates for preliminary interviews and we are currently contacting references. We hope to move forward finalists as soon as possible. We are doing more deliberations and discussion of, of the work that we've been doing this weekend and understanding that this is the last week of school for most districts. So the availability of reaching people back and forth has been challenging. And also just, you know, getting so, for us as well. So, so we're working as quickly and efficiently as we can, and I appreciate your patience as we work through all of this. So that's where at. And I should say, I don't know if there, actually, everybody knows who's on the committee, but I'll just reiterate that Dawn Naborsky and I are on the committee as well as Nicole Bottomly and a teacher named Erin Squires, who is at the Placetino and Miller School. So the four of us have been working very collaborative, collaboratively, and I really appreciate everyone's support and help. Yes?
Um, thank you both, I mean, the whole committee, but thank you, Dawn and Cynthia, since you're sitting right here, to so much. I know this is a lot of hard work. Is there any update or do you guys have any guess on when we might be doing interviews? Is there an update on that?
We do. We are hopeful that we will be able to conduct interviews as early as next week. Looking forward to perhaps Thursday of next week. I think that's what we are working towards.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
That's our hope.
So I, so I will cancel Monday and Wednesday, the dates, the times that we, I posted, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Joan?
A question. The interviews, are, they'll be conducted via Zoom with the school committee? With the entire school committee?
Yes.
That's correct.
Is that an open meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to make that distinction. And, and I just heard you said you had nine. We're not going to interview nine people, are we?
No.
No.
Our preliminary interviews were nine. Sorry, Dawn, you can go ahead.
Praise the Lord and pass a peace.
You don't want to interview nine people.
No, I don't.
Aunt Louise?
Um, no, just, I'm just, are you encouraged? That's all I want to know. Cautiously optimistic.
Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, that's fair.
Thank you.
Work with that.
Spoken like a true attorney.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Dawn.
All right. So thank you for that and thank you, ladies. I know this is, you know, this committee, we are burning the midnight oil for sure. So all of it is appreciated greatly by me anyways. We're going to jump to old business. Brad, do you just want to give that 20 second update on where school is now officially done for the year and we are on to summer vacation? Could you just share maybe with the committee about the recommendation coming from the Department of Ed that it is now no longer this week that works?
Myself. There's a couple of things I wanted to share within my COVID-19 update. First of all, the guy, there is a, there, there is a Zoom meeting with the commissioner. Zoom meeting with the commissioner and superintendents only uh, tomorrow. Um, where we are expected to hear that um, guidance is not going to be released tomorrow and is going to be released um, next week. Um, it um, is um, um, and so that um, and I shared that with the committee, excuse me, via email uh, last night or the night before, I forget which. Um, so uh, the um, um, the guidance uh, that um, and the commissioner has worked very, very closely with uh, the Mass Association of School Superintendents um, and the executive committee specifically. Uh, we met with him last Saturday for a couple of hours um, to uh, discuss um, his, some of his initial thinking with some of the state leadership uh, as well. Um, and gave some feedback. Um, so um, I um, I'm, um, I'm hopeful that we'll get some guidance that will um, will uh, provide a good base for the work to come uh, next week. Uh, in the meantime, I did, based on some of the uh, information that I've been given confidentially, I did tell the principals to put, for the last week of school, to put their task force on hold for the week. Um, and focus on the last week of school. Um, because um, I just think uh, we're working from some old data and we need to get that data updated. And um, the planning, um, I think the planning that we've done particularly around the budgeting um, is uh, is still solid and helpful and um, uh, but um, the, the planning in terms of scenario planning really um, is not uh, productive right now. Um, I did want to um, circle back to two things to close out COVID-19. If I could share my, try to share my screen? Um, I um, did want, you, you've, uh, this is in your packet, but this is all the remote learning data. I know it's kind of small um, student participation data for our remote learning from um, early uh, April when we began to track this um, through uh, the end of last week. We did not um, run the statistics for uh, the last few days of school. Um, and as you can see, um, our um, our numbers have been incredibly steady. Um, and um, really, I think quite high. So um, I'm very pleased with these numbers. There, there was a lot of work to track these. These are school-based numbers. Principals had grade-based numbers, class-based numbers, and were able to manage. Um, and one of the reasons why you did see some increases um, in um, in some of these areas were, was we were able to see some areas where there were some lower points that we wanted to address. Um, in the week ending, um, the reason why we have no data at Miller and Placentino for all Zoom calls is because, well, actually, I probably could have put it in either column, but that, those are the weeks that we increased from one to uh, multiple calls, or multiple sessions per week. So our participation was very high. Um, the data for Placentino was K to two. I took preschool out of it. Um, I just, the data is just all over the place with preschool. Um, and um, but all the other data is inclusive of all of our students. So that's the one piece of information I did want to share. The other piece that may have been lost in the um, uh, announcements that uh, were made during all the hoopla at the beginning of the meeting is that um, we have sent out a parent survey, K to 12, um, for uh, parent feedback on our remote learning. Um, even if we don't ever do remote learning again, I think there's a lot to learn there. Um, and I uh, I don't think we'll be in a position where we um, aren't at least considering remote learning at some level um, in the coming year. So I um, um, I encourage parents to fill out that, those surveys and give us their frank and honest feedback. We have received, anecdotally, I've received at least a dozen uh, very well-written emails from parents. Um, deeply grateful for the uh, remote learning experience that children have had uh, primarily at the elementary level. Um, and recognizing the uh, the challenges that uh, remote learning brings to an elementary student um, and their family. Um, so I think that um, that also, uh, but that data will be helpful and will be shared um, with the committee once it's uh, once the surveys have all been in and the information compiled. So that uh, completes my COVID-19 update. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brad. Um, I just want to share with you because I forgot to do this during announcements. Um, as shortly before tonight's meeting, I received a call from uh, Tina Heinz Select Woman and she asked that I share the good news that the town's application to the Executive Office of Administration and Finance for a Communities Cares Act, eligible in the amount of $1,317,137, combined for both FY20 and FY21, was approved.
Great.
So that was good news and I, uh, she was very excited about that. So congratulations um, to the chief and the select board um, and anyone else who was involved in that application. So just wanted to share that and let's uh, close out that COVID-19 conversation. And Aunt Louise, can you um, give an update on the um, budget?
Well, that was the first update. So that's good. Um, I know it is really good. Uh, so this week, when we met, we um, talked about a number of different things, including the newsletter. Um, so I don't know if that's gonna go out this week or next week because I know there were some other considerations. Um, and we wanted to make sure the budget information was accurate in that. Um, the other thing that we talked about was our capital request, which this is more of a heads up. I'm anticipating it will change and quite honestly, um, it was probably the last five minutes of our meeting when the topic came up that we may need to change it because of the um, teacher laptops up at the high school. Um, Dan McLeod is looking into that. We had initially talked about potentially putting that into the COVID-19 Cares Act reimbursement, but we didn't do it. It wasn't part of the numbers that we submitted. Um, because it, it wasn't clear that it would qualify, if you will. And I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail tonight, but um, because of that, I think he's gonna add it back into our spring capital request. So everyone probably forgot about that because it's separate from the COVID reimbursement request. Um, so we're still looking at, you know, last time as a committee, we approved um, moving forward with the recommendation to repair the Miller roof, deferring committee and field to the fall, although um, there's still some open questions about whether it still might be a good idea to pursue that. Um, and we'll talk about that next week. Um, and then adding back this piece for the um, teacher and administrator laptops up at the high school. The number is probably gonna be around 70,000 or 80,000 in there. Um, somewhere around 70,000, give or take. So I don't have the numbers yet. Um, we won't have them until next Wednesday. So when we get them, the subcommittee will look at them and come back with a recommendation. And I'm hoping we can then vote the capital request or any changes that come out of that. If, if nothing changes, then nothing changes, but I'm hoping we can vote it um, as a committee next week and maybe we can tack that on to one of the, either the front or the back of um, a posted meeting to do the interviews. So we don't have to have like a separate meeting. Um, so whenever that's gonna occur.
Well, so my, so my next, Aunt Louise, not to jump the gun, but my next question is, so there's a lot of new business left and it is 10:24. And I would like to recommend that we move some of these items to an additional meeting. And I hate to say that, but realistically, the truth of the matter is we'll be here till midnight. And we know we're not our best selves at 10:30 at night. So um, I know that so there's some conflicts on Wednesday evening. Am I nodded for me, please? I think people said there was conflicts on Wednesday. Um, so we did post on Monday for, we posted on Monday for, we have time available that we could do some of these other items on Monday possibly.
Um, The thing is though, don't we want to all attend to hear Senator Spelka? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but I, I, yeah. I booked from three to six and 11:30 to 1:30, I think. Dawn?
I think, I think that we have a policy subcommittee from 3:30 to 4:30 or 5:00 that day. And then the rest was um, regular session.
Yeah.
Right. And I didn't pull it yet just because I wasn't sure what we were gonna be doing, so.
Right. So I, I'm just throwing different options out there. So I know that we can't vote the, the capital budget until Thursday and that's, that's fine. Um, but I just, you, you need enough, you need a good couple of hours for interviews. So you would need to do another meeting. So I'm just wondering if we could reconvene on Monday to talk about um, the summer curriculum development plans, educating students on issues on race and bias. The 2020-2021 school committee meeting dates, the financial statement, like those things. You know, I, I'm not, they don't need to all be talked about tonight.
I, I completely agree, but I question whether we can put off the budget discussion because I was on the call, the select board call on Monday and they were like, we need to finalize the warrant. Like their hair's on fire on it, so.
No, I've talked, I've talked to all three of them.
Okay.
John Cronin called today to talk through the capital request policy, which I'll update you on. I didn't have a chance to do that. Um, and then Tina was in our subcommittee meeting Wednesday and she said, does this mean you won't be presenting budget?
Monday.
Monday night. And I said, yeah, I think it does. And then I thought maybe we could, but I spoke with Keith today and we don't have the numbers. And Brad said that he gave Dan, um, but Dan needs until Tuesday to work through some of the details with some of the administrations. So I updated Tina saying I didn't think we were gonna make it there. Um, and we just have to, we just have to make it in before they go to print the warrant. But I did assure John that we could do that within the week.
Okay. Jeff wouldn't give me a date, hard and fast date, which is probably wise on his part. Uh, but they seem to be pretty anxious about it. So I'm glad, as long as you had those conversations.
Yeah, that's all right. Um, should I update quick about the capital request policy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I mean, it's not a time to share. Uh, John Cronin called today because he, at Monday night's meeting, over a week ago now. Um, the topic of, among the things that are problematic for us in that policy, um, other than just the flat-out legal stuff is, are this, is the schedule. Um, it just doesn't line up with our own schedules. So he asked for my thoughts on that and I didn't anticipate the call. It was an informal call. So um, I haven't had a chance to go through it with the subcommittee or anybody else. But bottom line is, he's willing to sort of literally asterisk everything in the policy and say, um, essentially, you know, for the schools, you know, in deference to our different schedule, we may not, you know, they're gonna give us flexibility on that. They may, we may not be held to the exact dates and times that are in the policy, if you will. Um, so I'll, uh, he's gonna draft some language and share it with us and then I'll share it with all of you. Um, it doesn't address uh, two other primary concerns. Um, one is the um, the fact that the town administrator is positioned as sort of a screener in that policy so that we would first be presenting to the town administrator, who would then make recommendations to the select board and um, that, you know, I expressed some very strong concern that that's an infringement on our right to be able to present our request to um, to the floor at town meeting. Um, but certainly directly to the select board and not go, you know, not have a middleman screening us. Screening is different than recommendation. If the town administrator wants to make its recommendations, so be it, as long as nothing screened out, we should have that full visibility. Um, so that, you know, he, he kind of took that feedback. I, I don't know where it's gonna go. I think he's gonna consult with Jay Tallerman. Um, and then he, on the, on the subject of the overall legality of the thing, he suggested that perhaps it would make sense for um, our attorneys just to have a chat. Um, which, separate and apart, our own attorney suggested that. So um, so that may happen over the next week or so. To see if we can resolve some of the issues here.
Okay.
It, it was, like I said, a pretty informal conversation. He called just trying to get some input on what would make the flex, the schedule more flexible or whatever. So that's where it was at.
Okay. So thank you for that, Aunt Louise. So we look forward to voting next week. So question for the committee. What do you want to do about the rest of the items? Do you want to move it to next week?
Depends on when, yes, but depends on when.
Absolutely. I'm so incompetent.
So Wednesday night is definitely out.
What's Wednesday night?
I don't know. What's Wednesday night?
I can't do Wednesday.
The 24th.
No, but it's like, what's going on that Wednesday's out? Is there some school-related thing or is it just a conflict in general?
I can't do it.
No conflict.
I don't know if other people can, but I can't.
I might not be on the board, so don't go by me.
We just shoot for Monday. What, what was the time available on Monday?
So we have, I want to say it was three to six. But Peter actually is unavailable for part of that and his stuff is what I'm looking to move.
And policy is meeting until five?
Well, we were going to not meet if it meant there were in um, interviews or whatnot. We were gonna be flexible in our scheduling.
I could be available like, very shortly after five, but from four to five, I'm not available.
Do you think it's gonna take more than an hour to get through what's left? Could we do it from five to six?
Or even five to seven, right? We don't have to be at the select board meeting until seven.
It's like, it's, it is a Zoom meeting, right? So it's not like we have to go anywhere. We just have to flip from one.
Well, we, we posted for three to six.
Oh, I see. We posted for three to six.
But do we have to start at three? When we? How, how does that work? Like, like, could we just not start at three and get on at three and say, hey, we're not? We don't think.
Can we shorten the meeting? Can we say four to six or five to six? Brad, is that an option?
Well, you can't change that posting because it's less than 48 hours.
Can we get on at three and then retire and come back? That doesn't work.
I don't, well, I, I don't, I, I don't think this is the time to be anything but a rigid um, uh, use the open meeting law as a rigid ruler.
No, I, I'm not.
We have an executive session we could do.
No, I'm not trying to not do it. I'm just saying, within, within the bounds of open meeting law, can you open a meeting, retire and come back as long as it was posted?
No, so let's, I, I know and I agree and I don't want to mess around with this. So are people available next Friday for? So, are people available next Friday for interviews if we're, if we have a school committee meeting on Thursday?
I don't know.
Good grief. Sorry.
Not during the day, sure. At night, no.
I'm, I'm in Appia. Maybe on my way to New York to move.
All right. Well, instead of going back and forth, let's, okay, no, no, that's fair. Let's just pause then, and we'll go.
Well, what's, what's the morning plan that you said on Monday that we had available, that we already posted for?
11:30 to 1:30, 11:30 to 1:30.
Can we, can anybody do that? And maybe we could do Peter's thing later, or, or maybe Peter does his thing now? I don't know.
What's Peter's thing?
He has a whole discussion on educating our students on issues of race and bias, and I think that's important.
Yeah, I didn't know which item you were talking about.
Yeah, the end of new business.
I mean, I could do, could people do 3:00? I could do 3:00 to 3:45 on Monday, and then I'd, I'd leave.
I could do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'll just cancel policy, and we'll figure that out another time.
Okay. So, we're going to move Peter's two topics to Monday?
Yeah.
And then we're still going to have to meet on Thursday to talk about capital.
Yep.
It'll be quick. I don't think it's going to, I think you could probably add...
So, my goal of this being my last school committee meeting, I just found out there's two next week. You know that lovely bride of mine who was standing over there?
Yeah.
She's not happy.
She's, she's staring daggers at me now. So, what?
You got a hat.
Decide the Thursday night meeting, because you have to, you have to figure out what time, how many finalists you have, how much time you want to allocate to each finalist, and then do this either before or after. And I would just come in for that piece, and then I'd leave. So, I'd appreciate if you do it before, but...
I would anticipate that we are going to need between, would you say, four and a half to six hours, or four and a half to five hours for those final interviews and then deliberation.
And that, that's Thursday, right? Stacy, could you send us all an email, like, tomorrow with all the dates for everything we have to do next week?
Or better yet, just the invitations. Then I just click yes.
I feel like there's so much going on, I'm going to forget something.
Yes. So, to make the budget piece easier, Stacy, it's not, this isn't complicated or controversial. We're, we just need a number, and we're going to recommend it. So, what we'll do on Wednesday, when we're done with the subcommittee meeting, we'll send out a memo to the committee with what we're asking for. And then everyone will have the information in advance. It'll be like a 10-minute discussion. I don't think, is anyone here, like, going to be concerned about, like, laptops? Probably not. So...
So, what time do you want to meet on Thursday? To start. If you guys have a five-hour meeting after that, you want to meet at 2:00 or 3:00?
Are, are people available as early as 2:00 or 3:00 on Thursday, the 25th?
Yes. Yep.
Yes. Joan, thumbs up.
To the extent that I'll be on the committee, sure.
All right. So, Brad?
That's Cynthia. What was that, a cat?
So...
It's Thursday at 2:00 PM.
Yeah, we'll post tomorrow for Thursday at 2:00 PM, and then for our meeting on Monday.
Right. No, go ahead. I'm sorry, Stacy.
So, for Monday, we'll talk about, and sorry, which time, we're doing 3 o'clock on Monday, so I can cancel the 11:30, correct?
Yes.
Cancel 11:30. Monday at 3:00, we will do Peter's two pieces, and, and we can, Keith can do the financial statement and the 2020, 2021 school committee meeting dates.
We'll, yeah, we'll find, we'll finish this agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Although, we do have to do the, I would like to do the newsletter tonight, only because I, I want to inform the public about the interim search. That could wait till Monday. That could totally wait till Monday. And then we'll have more guidance from Desi. Mic drop. Hurry on!
Okay.
Way better.
Way wicked better.
Okay. So, that's what we'll do. So, in your packet, there are items of information, the minutes from policy, subcommittee held on 5:26, and then a bunch of meeting minutes from budget subcommittee.
Oh, that'll be fun.
No, that's just items of information. We don't need to, that's just FYI. Oh, I was going to say.
No, it's 10, 10 sets of minutes.
So, Stacy, you need, at this point in time, you'll need a motion to go into recess until you read, and will return at 3:00 PM on Monday, June 22nd, to complete the remainder of this agenda.
Yes.
Brad, that's what I was asking. I guess it, like, on Monday, we couldn't have, like, started at 3:00 and gone into recess and recess and started and come back at 5:00?
Well, I, I just think this is a better way. Well, Peter's...
No, it's fine, it's fine, but it just is a matter of edification for me. I was...
It's not entirely clear, right, Brad?
This is a recess of necessity, and where, and that meeting at 3:00 is posted for 3:00.
Okay, okay, fine, fine, fine. I'm just curious. I thought that we could do that, but, okay.
So, is there a motion?
It's what we can't do and what we should do, or sometimes two different things.
Moved by Andy?
Seconded by Cynthia.
Oh, hold on, Keith.
You didn't announce you signed warrants.
I'll sign warrants.
We're going to do that at the next meeting, too.
Moved by Andy, seconded by Cynthia.
Yep.
All those in favor, Mrs. Luskevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey? Yes, it is 10:41. We are now moving to recess. Well, in the recess. See you all on Monday. Have a wonderful weekend. Happy end of day of school, everyone. Good night.
Take care. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you on Monday.
Bye, everybody.
See you Monday.
Happy June.